Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the call. It's great to have everyone here. And it's good to be back before you. All right, we're freezing up here. All right, there we go. Join me in a moment of silence, please, as we have called the meeting to order. Thank you. I'll now pass it over to Councilmember Freeman for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand to salute the flag and say the pledge together.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Rist.
Here.
There it is. There we go. All right, I will now pass it over to Councilmember Cook for the ceremonial items.
Good evening. I'm going to be reading a proclamation about Huntington's disease. And yeah, if y'all want to come join me, a second. All right, proclamation. Whereas Huntington's disease is an inherited progressively degenerative neurological disease that causes total physical and mental deterioration over a 10- to 20-year period. And whereas the prevalence of Huntington's disease makes it a rare disease, there are over 10 million citizens in the United States of North Carolina with Huntington's disease. And whereas there is a 50% chance for the children of Huntington's patients to inherit the disease and continue to pass it down generation after generation. And whereas stigma, genetic discrimination, and fear prevent many patients from seeking care, there has been great progress in medical research, however, there is still no cure for Huntington's disease. Whereas Duke Hospital's Movement Disorder Center is recognized by HDSA as one of 55 Centers of Excellence in the United States. Since 2009, HD Reach has been working to improve the care and quality of life of those affected by Huntington's disease in North Carolina through care management, referrals to healthcare and financial resources, family support, education, and anonymous genetic testing. And whereas the month of May is recognized as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Huntington Disease Awareness Month in the City of Durham and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the fifth day of May 2025.
My name is Burton Scott. I'm a neurologist over at Duke University, and I'm involved in taking care of folks with this illness called Huntington's disease, of which there's about 1,400 people in North Carolina that have Huntington's disease and about 41,000 across the U.S. And about five times that at risk of developing Huntington's disease, which affects memory, it affects movement, and it affects behavior. And basically hits people when they're in their prime earning years and makes them disabled over a few years. It's a very devastating illness. We try to take care of these folks through the help of the HD Reach people and the Huntington's Disease Society of America. And if you've lived in Durham for a while, or if you've been downtown, about 10 years ago, one of the patients that we saw was actually wandering around downtown, sleeping over on the steps of that Trinity United Methodist Church right across, I don't know, right over on the other side here. And their pastor was looking in on this person and helping them get their medicines, helping take care of them a little bit out of their own benevolence. But they contacted us and our social workers got involved in his care. But basically Huntington's folks are everywhere. Huntington's folks need help and appreciate the city council recognizing the proclamation about HD Awareness Month.
Thank you all very much. My name is Betsy McFarland. I'm, hello. I'm the executive director of HD Reach. We serve the state of North Carolina with resources, referral, education, support. And we are grateful for this recognition and look forward to continuing our partnership with Duke as well as several other hospitals within the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Thanks for the work you do.
Mr. Mayor, good evening to my honorable colleagues on the council, to the staff, to everyone in chamber this evening with us and those watching on whatever platform you may be watching. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to read this proclamation for National Drinking Water Week, something we all need. I'm going to invite Robert Pepper, who's the brownwater plant supervisor, to come and stand with me if he's here. Oh, wane drop's here. Cool. I used to be afraid of wane drop, but we've reached an agreement.
There's a reason why. There's a reason why I asked you to read this tonight.
And clowns. We'll talk about that later. Proclamation. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of all living things. And whereas only tap water provides public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the city delivers a reliable supply of high-quality, award-winning drinking water. And whereas, as stewards, we must advocate for water infrastructure maintenance and improvements to meet the needs of future generations. And whereas the city continues to be a leader in source water protection and recognizes the potential impacts of climate change on this precious natural resource. And whereas dedicated individuals and organizations have made significant contributions in developing, operating, and maintaining our water infrastructure and educating the public on the value of this resource. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Durham. You can clap for that. In the City of Durham and urge all residents and citizens to celebrate our staff that produces, manages, and maintains the city's water resources and to help make Durham a more sustainable community by embracing water-wise habits. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the fifth day of May 2025, Leonardo Williams, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Williams and members of the city council. I'm Robert Pepper, Plant Operations Coordinator at the Brown Water Treatment Plant. It's an honor to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of my fellow water operators and all employees of Durham's Department of Water Management and Water Supply and Treatment. We work 24/7, 365 days a year to ensure that all of our customers have access to one of the most basic human needs, clean and safe drinking water. If you look at the city's strategic plan, each one of the five goals requires water because all of us, as humans, requires water. The 380-plus department employees help make that possible on a daily basis. Everyone from operators to maintenance technicians, engineers, laboratory and water efficiency analysts, all play key roles in making sure our award-winning Durham water flows to your tap. Everyone in Durham wakes up, takes a shower, brushes their teeth, uses the restroom, and maybe brews some coffee. That means our team has made a million customer touchpoints before 8:00 a.m. every morning. Providing service like this requires an amazing team, and we have one. Part of our responsibility to ensure our water supply is safe and reliable is to educate the next generation about the importance of drinking water. Each year, our water efficiency team sponsors a poster contest that highlights the value of water. This year's theme was "Make Waves by Saving Water," and we received 168 entries. That made judging difficult. Our nine finalists, you can see their creations on the screens, went on to win several of the top spots at the state competition. Thank you for taking time tonight to recognize the vital role safe drinking water plays in all our lives. We appreciate the support of city council, city administration, fellow city employees, and of course, the residents of Durham, who make this community a great place to live, work, and play.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for always being excellent at what you do. All right, I will now pass it over to Councilmember Cook to start us off with our very brief remarks tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all, those of you who are here in person, anyone watching online. Just a couple of brief announcements. The first is that I just arrived back in town for a weekend in DC with my colleague, Councilmember Baker. We went to the Young Elected Officials, I believe it was their 20th, 25th convening, connected with other local leaders, young local leaders from across the country, folks, other folks who are city council members, school board members, and also state representatives, and discussed moving forward in a world that feels pretty difficult right now. So a lot of really honest conversation, a lot of useful conversation, and some really great networking opportunities there. I also had the opportunity before I left to go visit the Polly Murray Center. And special thanks to Angela and Jesse who took me around. I believe Angela's the executive director, Jesse is the chair of the board. And we talked a lot about similar things, to be honest, what it looks like to hold space to remember Polly Murray and their activism and just how they excelled in so many different capacities and brought justice and movement to all of those capacities as an artist, as a faith-based theologian, as an attorney, as an educator, and just as a person and community with their family members, and how special it is that we have this national site right here in Durham. So I just want to read you a quote from Polly Murray that is up in their childhood home that is also the Polly Murray Center. And it is, "One person plus a typewriter equals a movement." So I've been really meditating on that and really feeling appreciative for that space and looking forward to watching them grow and hold space for other members of the Durham community. So really glad to have that resource. And those are my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Baker.
Good evening, colleagues. Good evening, members of the public. It's wonderful to see everyone in the room today. Sometimes it can be difficult to talk about local issues without also thinking about the context in which we're operating. More recently, there were additional announcements by the Trump administration made about the Environmental Protection Agency, which will have direct effects on workers here in Durham. The EPA, many of you know, is a top 20 employer in our area. They are facing restructuring, which could put at jeopardy many of the jobs that are here locally. And so I just wanted to share, News Observer wrote an article on this, and they quoted one of the employees who said, "The mood is mass confusion, fear of loss of hundreds of top environmental scientists, and sadness about the effects this will have on the protection of people and the environment. It feels like a direct attack on science." It is a direct attack on science, attack on the environment, and will have fiscal and economic impacts here locally. So I just want those workers and everyone associated with the EPA to know that I stand with you and condemn those decisions that are being made. I had the opportunity to attend the Stagville Memorial Project, Public Art Community Engagement Kickoff. Very, very exciting work going on around Stagville and the former Stagville plantation upon which much of Durham sits. Incredible work happening there. Ricky Hart is the chair of the Stagville Descendants Council, has been doing tons of work. There was a great panel at that event. And there's been a lot of work between the Stagville Memorial Project, the City of Durham, and Durham County. So much thanks to all of the community members that are doing that work, keeping alive the history and the memory of what we used to be. Because it's hard for us to understand who we are without understanding the history that we have. And it's so important that as we grow and change as a city that we remember that past and we bake it into our built environment. And that's exactly what the work that is happening with the Stagville Memorial Project, city and county staff is doing. And then finally, I just want to say, I attended biscuits and banjos, and that was a fantastic time. I've seen some smiles and nods in the room. I think that other folks may have done the same. And I went with my family, and we just had such a great time going out. It was a wonderful event. Of course, we have many amazing events, but this is a new one. And I just remember standing in downtown Durham, looking across the city, and the sun was setting and it was reflecting off the train tracks. And I was just listening to this amazing folk music in the background. And just with everything going on in the world, sometimes there are little moments that just feel very special, and that was one of them. So I'm happy to have biscuits and banjos in the city of Durham. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you all are talking about this conference for young elected officials. Are you all calling us old because we didn't go? I was registered, but I couldn't go. So I'm hot in the gray hairs. I defy this. Go ahead, Councilmember Caballero.
I would just like to remind the mayor that he and I both wear reading glasses, and so maybe that's a good sign about who that conference was geared to and who it wasn't. Although I will also laugh at my colleagues when they cross that threshold. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. This weekend was, this weekend and last weekend were busy weekends in Durham. Biscuits and banjos this weekend. I was able to go to the strawberry festival and bring greetings in the part of the city. It was great to see former Mayor Shul and his family and lots of community members out and about. It was their 20th strawberry festival, so that was pretty cool. And then I also stopped by the Teen Girls Empowerment Conference, which was at Holton on Saturday. And that was also very good to go and see teen girls having a whole conference around mental health, which we know is critically important, especially for our teens, I gotta say. I think they have it a lot harder than I did, and the state of the world is in a much darker place than it was in the 90s. So I just want to thank everyone again for continuing to go out to community events. We're going to get through this together and not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I want to appreciate my colleagues' comments. And I do want to say the Young Elected Officials Conference is probably one of the best conferences I've attended. It's really exciting and inspiring to see so many folks active across the country. I do want to say that I had the chance to visit with the Boys and Girls Club of Durham and Orange Counties and enjoy their breakfast and conversation. It was a really good turnout. I really was pressed about the young lady who escorted me to my table who used to live in Durham and no longer lives here and attended the Boys and Girls Clubs since second grade. It was kind of troubling, but it was kind of related to how we talk about things here in the council. So it stuck with me. I do know that it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and I do want to say with so many folks falling out of the working class, so, you know, becoming unhoused, I just want to encourage you to reach out and talk to your people, your friends, your family, just folks you know who might not be doing so well right now. Mental health is a thing you have to keep track of, you have to stay on top of. It's not, it just stays in place. And I just want to encourage folks to do that. I'm excited about the safe drinking water. I have to say the Durham still has the best drinking water in the state. I don't know about the country, because I do like New York's water the best. I did get to just sit in on a few biscuit and banjos opportunities. That is really interesting. It is not my thing, I have to say. The biscuits definitely are, though. They were really good and tasty. And I definitely want to give a good shout out to the members of Union Baptist Church, just noting they were piled in for an evening of conversation about the budget and council for an update. And I am like floored anytime people want to hear about it. So it was exciting to share some updates. I do want to appreciate Councilmember Cook's comments. Polly Murray being an Episcopalian minister means a lot in the season. Anytime we come through and can celebrate her, I want to make sure we do. And then I also just want to say that, well, two things. First of all, may the force be with you. I enjoyed a great trivia night with some Star Wars know-it-alls. I'm not going to call anything else, but it was really fun. And I want to say that I had a chance to finally catch up with my younger sister and meet my newest nephew. I have a lot of nieces and nephews, and it's always a pleasure and like a great joy to actually sit and hold and play and listen and burp and change diapers and just kind of get that realization back, because my little ones are now teenagers, that it's, there's a lot to life. And we still got a lot of hope and a lot of work to do out here. So I'm excited. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rist.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, colleagues, residents, those online. Happy Cinco de Mayo, by the way, right? Big day in our community. You know, the weather's getting nicer, so a lot of my comments are about some of the things that are happening, because there's been so much going on, it seems like outdoors with the weather getting nicer. So I'm glad that Director Wade Walcutt is here from Durham Parks and Rec. I've got a lot of DPR shout-outs here, so be ready. First thing is, I just want to send out a word of love to the tennis community, my buddies in the tennis community, and want to thank folks who came to, I guess, the last work session, right, to speak about resurfacing the courts at Almyra Park and at Rockaway Park. I am on the Recreation Advisory Committee and been working with Director Walcutt and his staff on a regular schedule of resurfacing for all the courts around the city. So I just want to assure folks that the request to resurface both Almyra and Rockaway Park is in the budget request, and we hope to see that as we see the budget coming up soon from the city manager, right? I also want to thank Zach from the Planning Commission, who's a big tennis player. He got his buddies Skeet and Michael out. We went to play on Rockaway to check out the conditions there. Our next visit is going to be to Almyra, so we're doing a round of all the public courts to see the conditions and play with some really good players. So thanks to the tennis community for all your engagement. Speaking of Rockaway Park, also had a great time at the K-9 Field Day on April 26th. What a blast. Have you ever been out there with your dogs? It's such a fun time. My little Rio came with me and participated in the 50-yard dash, and she got about 45 yards down the runway and then kind of stopped. So I was so disappointed my dog didn't finish the 50-yard dash, but it was a great time. Also speaking of DPR, the next day then, on the 27th, was the Earth Day Celebration, the 55th anniversary of Earth Day. Thanks to, again, to DPR for organizing a great event and all the festivities and folks who came there. I had a blast there doing a shift at the Bike Durham, a table that was also, we co-tabled with the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. One of the benefits of being at that table is we were right next to the Bike Co-op, and they gave me a free tune-up on my bike, which was kind of fun. They wanted me to tell everybody that they do do free tune-ups every third Saturday at the farmer's market. So if you're a biker and want to get a free tune-up, the Bike Co-op is there every third Saturday, which is quite a nice benefit for bike riders. Speaking of bikes, May is Bike Month, so check out the website of Bike Durham for a full list of activities going on during Bike Month. There's a ton of them going on, including the Bike Walk and Roll to School, which I think is maybe later this week, maybe, I think. So check out that one as well. Also a good event to join kids who are biking and walking and rolling to school. Thanks, Councilmember Baker, for mentioning biscuits and banjos. What a great event. I went on Friday to watch Taj Mahal perform, which was kind of an amazing event. He's a legendary guy, such a fun concert. That was so much fun. I want to thank the organizers for doing this. I know it's not easy to organize a festival, but I hope we can do that every year in Durham. It was a great event. Folks came to Durham. I think we could be super proud of the huge lineup they had. So good on us for biscuits and banjos. Also last weekend, in addition to all that stuff, there was the event I participated in called the Socks and Undies 5K Run-Di, which is a run to support Note in the Pocket. Do y'all know about Note in the Pocket? An amazing group in Durham, the city manager has heard of Note in the Pocket, amazing group that provides clothing for kids who are clothing insecure. So all kids have, can go to school and not feel insecure about their clothing. So it's a great mission. They work a lot with the county. They organize this race, and I was glad to be on the team that was organized by Deputy County Manager Shannon Trapp and her husband Ray Trapp, who has been our representative from Duke Energy to the city. I think he's got a new job now of supporting Head Start. So a lot of fun in that race. The last thing I'll say, this last weekend, the League of Women Voters had their 39th Annual Statewide Convention here in Durham. And since the mayor's out of town, I got a request to speak there and bring opening remarks. I was glad to do that, super proud of the work of the League of Women Voters, working to empower voters and defend democracy for so many years. So glad to see them doing the work here. It was also a very special moment for me, because as some of you may know, my mother was involved deeply in the work of the League of Women Voters when I was a kid. And so like, my first role model in this whole issue of local government and public service was watching my mom and her buddies, Rosalie and Mimi, Mimi Jones, doing their crazy work with the League of Women Voters. So I learned a ton from them. It's been a great organization that's built capacity in women for years to engage in public service. And so I thank the league for the work, for inspiring my mom, and also giving me a chance to watch my mom do this great work. So kudos to the league and for the 39 years of activity in North Carolina. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, to my colleagues. Thanks for the great announcements this evening. Very quickly, firstly, Mr. Manager, I want to thank you and the staff and colleagues, you as well, and so many people in the city who showed so much support during my past, this past year, as I held the gavel as president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities this past week, the opportunity to preside over City Vision 2025 in Greenville, where I gave up the gavel to our next president, Martha Sue Hall, who was the Mayor Protem of the City of Almamar, North Carolina. So I want to send best wishes out to her. I transitioned now to immediate pass. I'm still on the board, but as I like to tell folks, I get to go to all the parties now with none of the responsibilities of the gavel. So I also want to send a special shout-out to our stars, Planning Director Sarah Young, who was there this week and sat on a YouTube, Mr. Mayor, who sat on a great panel. Durham is a leader in so many spaces in our state, and one of those spaces is some of the work we're doing in affordable housing. We've been called to the league and had an opportunity to show off Durham with our work around racial equity. I know sometimes those of us who live in the city and are close to it, because we're close to it, doesn't seem like anything's really happening, and sometimes I think we take for granted how close we are. But when you compare Durham to other cities in this state and indeed this nation, we are in the vanguard of making breakthroughs and doing some pretty innovative things when it comes to some of the most salient issues of our day. So I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues and the staff for the great year of holding the gavel, and want to encourage my colleagues to lean in, and let's continue to make sure that our representation at the state level in the league is what it's been for Durham. I thank Councilmember Freeman for mentioning Mental Health Awareness Month. Very important. When your car's not working, you take it to a mechanic. When your refrigerator, your HVAC is broken, you call the right professional. If you need somebody to talk to in life, call them. Call someone and get some help. We need to de-stigmatize mental health and seeking out things we need for mental health. I want to thank my colleagues also for pointing out the festivals that have gone on. I have said time and time again... I have said time and time again, sometimes we have to put an asterisk next to some of our celebrations. I want to send best wishes and love and light out to the family of a young 16-year-old who was killed in Durham just the other day. Asterisk. No matter how great our festivals are, how tall our buildings get, what's paying, playing at DPAC, how much recognition we get for our growth, there will always be an asterisk when less than two miles from our city center. Once again, there are children jumping in bathtubs when it's not bath time, when there are certain neighbors in our city who have resigned themselves to the proposition that gunfire every night is just a regular thing. It's just the way it is. There are certain neighborhoods in this city where we simply would not tolerate it. We would bring everything to bear, everything to bear. So for that family, anytime, a former mayor used to say, anytime gunfire goes off, it rips a hole in our entire city, and I want that family to know that the city's heart beats with them and for them tonight. We must continue to make sure that whatever else we're talking about, that this remains issue number one for us as a government and as a city. May God bless that young man's memory, and may God bless his family. Thank you. And finally, colleagues, I'll need an excused absence for this Thursday's work session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll address that excuse absence before we get into, well, we can do it now. Is there a motion?
Oh, yeah, a motion for an excused absence for the Mayor Protem.
Second. And moving properly second to excuse Mayor Protem for this Thursday's work session. All in favor? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Please close the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. I'll pass it back to Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to appreciate Councilmember, Mayor Protem Middleton, just jogging my memory. Also, I did want to just bring an update. It was shared with me from folks over at the Widded School or the Widded Housing, the senior housing that's there, that they are working, I know there were folks who came to the council meeting, they are working to address the doors. Apparently, there was some issue where they felt, well, where they were told they couldn't use new doors because it was a historic building, and that's been worked out, and so they're working to get those doors to come in, to kind of address that issue so that those folks in that building can be safe. It is a little bit of a backlog with the doors coming from out of the country, but I just wanted to make sure the folks knew that that issue did not fall by the wayside. It's still being worked on. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks for highlighting that. And that's a great example of how this council works. I wasn't aware of what was going on at the Widded School Apartments until Councilmember Cook brought it to my attention. She had been meeting with them on a regular basis, and I brought it to my attention. I got involved, started working with the owners of the property and some of the representatives there. Former mayor got involved, Councilmember Freeman got involved, council members have been engaged, and it's not even a city property. It's Durham property, Durham County and DHA, but they're Durham residents, and we're going to make sure we show up. So colleagues, I thank all of you all for that engagement. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for your service at the League of Municipalities, the number one and largest advocacy organizations for municipalities across the state of North Carolina. Your leadership was quite impeccable. It's sometimes hard to appreciate when you're in term for just one year, but we were not expecting what was going to happen to western North Carolina, and just the weekly trips that you had to drive out to the west, working with the, the league out there and the state government, really appreciate that presence. And your remarks and your parting comments were profound, so thank you. Mayor Protem also mentioned that we sat on a panel. I know that we always talk about zoning cases in here, and sometimes it feels like the world is coming to an end. Let me introduce you to some towns across North Carolina. You'd be surprised. Actually, the, I want to shout out our planning department. You guys take a lot of flak from developers and from community members and the pressure from us, but, but after sitting on that panel with you, Mayor Protem, and you, Director Young, and a local practitioner, and listening to all of the housing topics going on around the state and how folks, planning departments are faring about, I am so glad to be in Durham. I am so glad to be in Durham, and I have not emailed you this, but I'm going to ask you now publicly, but if you will, just that longitudinal presentation that you did, could you please package that as a model? Because folks are still emailing, asking, how is Durham doing that, and how can we do it? It'll help a lot of towns and cities across North Carolina, especially those that are getting major employers dropped right in their backyard with no investment into their infrastructure, and the employers are bringing more people than the population of the towns, and I, I, I don't know how to go to do it. So thank you for the work that you all are doing. You know, I, I made a comment today on the news. I said, I'm more interested in people sounding the alarm when our children are alive than sounding the alarm after they're dead. I'm going to say that again. I'm more interested in sounding the alarm when our kids are alive than when they're dead. It is quite interesting that my Twitter blows up and my Facebook blows up and Instagram and my email inbox and my text messages every time there's a shooting, but it's salad when it's not. And when there's not a shooting, it's potentially building up to one. Now, overall, our crime, violent crime is down, homicides are down, the day, the, the crime is trending down, but when we lose one, we've lost too many. So I, I appreciate the outcry because it's necessary, but if we are going to zone in on one person solving a city of 320,000, we're never going to get the issue solved. So I want to say this on the record. What frustrates me the most is I feel it every time this happens, this gun violence situation, and it's just nothing, I just feel like there's nothing I can do other than what we can control. But when it comes to transportation, you know, we have a Vision Zero plan, you know, we, we are, we are over all transportation. The reason why we can respond to transportation is because we have it all in the city. When it comes to gun violence, I have no control over the county. Comes to gun violence, I have no control over the schools, no control over the DA's office, no control over the sheriff's office, no control over the courts. And in order to respond to gun violence, it's going to take all of them, and everybody has a different philosophy. So who's the common denominator in the systemic framework of our governments? You are, the community. So we, we, we got to stop responding only when there's a situation and start making it a lifestyle of engagement. So whatever you're doing to preserve the lives of our youth in this community, please keep doing it. Spread the word, get people to do it with you. I'm only one person. I can't show up everywhere, but I promise you, every single week I'm in a school, every single week I'm on these streets. If I haven't been to your event or your situation or whatever it is you're doing, it doesn't mean I'm not doing it. But please, stop looking at one individual to solve everybody's issues. It's going to take all of us. Right now, there is a mother or a father in their home where their child is talking back to them and their displaying behavior, that if they keep right on doing it, in another year, they're going to be outside after nine o'clock. Why is a 13-year-old outside at night after 9:00 PM? Next thing you know, they're going to get embraced by some 19, 20-year-olds. Next thing you know, hold this pistol for me real quick. Next thing you know, they got all the wrong confidence in the world. Next thing you know, they're shooting someone. Next thing you know, Mayor, what are we going to do about gun violence? That is the cycle. So I'm going to continue to work towards shaping our response as a collective, but government moves too slow, and it is so frustrating. So I hope that we could be more active in that space like we are in other spaces as a community, and I want to project that the Bull City Future Fund, the reason why I didn't do it in the city because I don't want to have to deal with the city bureaucracy. So I'm using my platform personally with private organizations to raise this money, and we are about to announce our first tranche of funding, and I'm excited on what we're about to announce. We are going to really put a lot of funding behind many organizations, a lot of them, and we'll be releasing that press release, and I hope you'll come out and celebrate with us and celebrate these kids. But thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars are going out really, 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 really soon, and I look forward to that. That's what I'm doing, and I hope that you'll continue to do what you're doing, but it is frustrating. But I thank my colleagues for all of the comments around the festivals. I missed the Banjos and Biscuits and Banjos Festival. However, I get, I got a chance to do something that none of you all did. I was riding my bike, and I saw Riannon walking down the street, and I got off my bike, and I was like, Riannon, I'm so sorry I couldn't make it. She's, oh, hey, Mayor. And so we walked over to Oak House and got coffee, and we just hung out. So the star of the show, I fortunately happened to see her walking down the street, and we, we hung out, so I'm glad you all sat in the audience. I was walking the street. That being said, it's been a beautiful few weeks, weekends in Durham, and I know that I missed our last meeting. Colleagues, spent a good bit of time in London, representing the City of Durham, and for the few emails I got, I spent some time in London at the expense of the summit that I was speaking at, and got a personal informal invite from the parliament, and I was able to spend some time there, go on the ground to the chapels that I didn't know existed. And it was just an amazing experience representing the City of Durham, and when somebody reaches out and say, hey, we want to fund you to come over and represent your city and talk about some of the innovative things you guys have going on, that's, that's, that's pretty exciting. So I was, I was really grateful for that opportunity. And yeah, so my last and final comment tonight. Derek, could you please come down here? Come on down. He hates being put on the spot. Sir, come on over here. So the office of the mayor has evolved quite a bit, and Mayor Steve Shul created a position of Special Assistant to the mayor, I think it was called that, or something like that, and it was passed on to Mayor O'Neil, and I'm now the mayor, and I was able to fill this position, and I was really fortunate and lucky to fill this position with someone that, you know, impeccable is an understatement. I have the luxury of showing up, giving remarks, assuming the title was mayor, and people were like, oh, my God, like, how do you do all of this? How did you put on this amazing event, and how did you get $30,000, like, just to do a financial literacy and American economic empowerment tour, and, gosh, like, how do you keep getting to the White House, and, gosh, how do you keep getting invited to all these places, and, man, Mayor, your response time is just amazing. Every time I send you an email, you, you respond just like that. Every time you show up, Mayor, you show up and you are on it. The fact of the matter is, I've always just got to show up because the real work has been done by this young man right here, and tonight is his very last city council meeting. He is going to Harvard Law. So I, I had to really shout him out because he has made this job, he's made something very impossible possible. The way that this office has engaged in this community and has responded between him and Kamala, our executive assistant, yeah, I, I definitely couldn't do this by myself. And I remember being, you know, just, you know, just, you know, on council in a general sense, but when you become mayor, it's like the expectations change, but your response, your responsibilities and your expectations from the community changes, but you still have the same power. That doesn't change. But the expectation is definitely raised, and I just really appreciate all that you've brought to the City of Durham, Derek, and I am so proud of you, and I'm looking forward to you, you know, representing the City of Durham, born and bred, up in Cambridge at Harvard Law, and, oh, yeah, there were a job office that came in this morning, I forgot to tell you, so hurry up and finish. All right, so with that being said, let's get to business with my reading glasses on. Yes, priority, oh, shouldn't have sent that. Priority items, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council.
Sorry. I'm so sorry.
Quite all right.
Colleagues, I, I need to put this in rotation. I am going to communicate with you all after tonight, a proposal for a resolution, joining some of my colleagues across the state that reference, that refers to HB 765, and I would like your support. I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but we, we do need to make sure we're standing up and, and, you know, not just sitting quiet when local powers are, are at risk of us being able to do zoning work. So I'll get the, get the final edit and send that out to you all, and I'd like to bring that to, to the work session for us if we can get that work. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Thank you all so much. All right. There you go.
Good evening again, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. The city manager's office does have a few priority items this evening. For agenda items number six, nine, and 13, those were the 2025 Durham Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Park System Plan, the Contract ST 335C Pavement Management Services 2025, and the proposed water and sewer rates for FY 2025, 2026. Additional information requested during the April 24th work session has been added for all three of these items. Those are my priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the council. The city attorney's office does not have any priority items this evening.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and city council members. The clerk's office has no items this evening.
All right. Thank you all so much. Our colleagues, just before I get into the, this agenda, I'm going to swap 16 to 15, so just so you see that. All right, it's just, at this time, I'll read the consent agenda. Item number one, Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment. Item number two, Durham Board of Trustee, Durham Board of Adjustments Appointment. Number three. Yes, Derek, yes. Number three, Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board Appointment. Number four, Temporary Staffing Services On-Call Provider List. Number five, ContractWithGovernmentJobs.com Incorporated for software to manage job recruitment and applicant tracking functions. Number six, 2025 Durham Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Park System Plan. Number seven, Contract ST-341C Carver Street Extension SCMS. Number eight, Contract ST 338C Petition Assessment Services. Number nine, Contract ST 335C Pavement Management Services 2025. Number 10, Contract Amendment Number One for SW 96, PW Street Maintenance and Repairs 2024. Number 11, Contract with CW, CDW Government LLC to Purchase CA Inc. Licenses. Number 12, Construction Award to Moffett Pipe Incorporated for the North Carolina 54 Waterline Replacement Project. Number 12, Proposed Water and Sewer Rates for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. Number fif, number 13, I'm sorry. Number 15, Consolidated Annexation Howard Property. Number 16, Zoning Map Change Strauss Drive Townhouses. Those are our consent agenda. Those are our consent agenda items.
Move to adopt consent.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clark, please open the vote. Please close.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to do 16 first.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Mayor Protem Middleton, members of council. Before we begin, and I turn it over to Andy Lester to talk about this case, I do want to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. We staff recognize that notices were received by many of our residents for these cases later than usual, and we are working to address those issues as much as we can internally to make sure that notifications get to residents in a timely manner. But they did all meet all legal requirements.
All right, you've heard the.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, got you.
Yep, attack team. Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, honorable council members. It's good to be with you all tonight. I'm Andy Lester with the Planning Department. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Marie Farmer of Parker Poe for six parcels of land totaling 13.49 acres and located at 1801, 1803, 1807, 1809, 1811, and 1850 Strauss Drive and inclusive of Strauss Drive. The current zoning is Commercial Center and Residential Suburban 20. The applicant proposes to change the designation to Residential Suburban Multifamily with a Graphic Development Plan and Commercial Center with a Graphic Development Plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow up to 95 townhouse detached row house, multiplex, or apartment units. The properties are currently designated Transit Opportunity Area on the Place Type Map. The proposed Residential Suburban Multifamily with a Graphic Development Plan and Commercial Center with a Graphic Development Plan zoning is generally consistent with the designated place type. If the proposed zoning is approved, there would be no change to the Place Type Map. Thank you. Staff and applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Colleagues, are there any questions or technical requests? Right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, members of council. My name is Marie.
What time do you think you need?
Oh, I think eight minutes is fine, probably less.
All right, let's put 10 minutes on. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Marie Farmer with Parker Poe 301 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant, Profit Dixon Partners. I'm accompanied tonight by Brian Richards, Principal Partner and Landscape Architect with Urban Design Partners, who will be available to answer questions this evening. Our team is proud to present this project tonight, which offers a new housing type within close proximity to existing food and retail, transit, and a public park with environmental and incomer restricted units. This request is to rezone six parcels along Strauss Drive at the intersection of Andrew Avenue and South Miami Boulevard that are currently vacant commercial. The total acreage for the property is a little over 13, but as the graphic development plan will show in just a moment, the actual developable acreage for this site is much smaller. The current zoning on the site is Commercial Center, and the zoning we are requesting is Residential Suburban Multifamily, which will allow for a townhouse development. The request does also include Commercial Center because we included the parcel that contains Strauss Drive on the development plan, which technically changes the zoning from Commercial Center to Commercial Center with a development plan. Otherwise, there are no proposed changes to that parcel as it will continue to serve its access for the site. The place type map designation for this site is Transit Opportunity Area, which describes moderately sized places found throughout the community at the junction of major transit stops with development that supports the use of transit. The design of these areas should include buildings that are located close together with a mix of uses, easy access to the street, and designed to serve the daily needs of residents. Development of new transit opportunity areas should seek to find spaces that are already filled by transit, filling in vacant lots or parking lots, and protecting natural spaces that preserve environmental resources. Our request meets that TOA designation because we are proposing a new residential use immediately adjacent to existing commercial uses with units close to and fronting the street, a pedestrian crosswalk for easy access to existing transit right there at the intersection, all while protecting the most environmentally sensitive portions of the site by clustering the buildings north of the stream, reducing the impervious surface, and providing additional tree preservation. The graphic development plan includes a number of graphic and text commitments that exceed ordinance requirements. So again, we've reduced the impervious surface permitted to 70%. We've increased the tree coverage to 25%. And then also, in response to our single family neighbors to the north, we are providing a buffer that you can see highlighted in green there. You can also see on the graphic development plan where our stream buffers and our tree preservation will be located to the south. There are also a number of text commitments included with this project. We have several design commitments, including variation in appearance. We have environmental commitments so that our stream water or our stormwater control measure infrastructure will not be located within the stream buffer. All new plants will be native. We've committed to active open space affordability at 80% AMI for 30 years, and those units will contain two or more bedrooms, and it also accounts for whether the units are for rent or for sale. We again are providing a crosswalk along Strauss, Strauss Drive, along with the sidewalk. And then in response to encouragement from staff, we have also committed to planting a landscape strip along Strauss Drive between the existing curb and sidewalk. And at Planning Commission, we increased our donation to Durham Public Schools to account for the number of students that will be generated from this rezoning. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this case eight to zero, with Vice Chair Chigera stating that this is the type of project Durham should be pursuing, Commissioners Wynn and Williams both stating it is a great info project, and Commissioner Woke noting there are multiple profers that make this a model project. This request is consistent with 19 of 24 applicable policies of the comprehensive plan. As you can see, we are consistent with five policies by meeting the standards set by the UDO and 14 policies by exceeding those standards. This request is also consistent with four of five transit opportunity place type policies. And finally, this rezoning is consistent with the review criteria in the UDO. It is consistent with the comp plan compatible with the zoning and conforming uses of nearby property. It will improve the balance of uses in the area by providing a new housing type that will meet demand here in Durham, and there is adequate infrastructure available to support the proposed development. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I have one, well, I have one speaker. No, I'm sorry, I don't.
That's 15, yeah. Although everybody is a supporter, applicant.
Is that a five or six?
That's 15.
Okay, never mind. That's 15. Marie, Brian Richards, Wyatt Dixon, and Casey Gyardozer.
That's the applicant.
Got you. All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and back before council. Colleagues, yes, Councilmember Cook.
One quick question. You said the 5% and 80% AMI, and then you said that you're accounting for whether they are for sale or for rent, but could you expand on what you meant by that?
Yes, so on the development plan, if you look Attachment D of the staff report, you'll see commitment number 12. We've broken that up into two different sections. So you will see if the units are for rent, it will be limited to those earning no more than 80% AMI. And then if you go down to B, we have the option for sale, and it specifies the deed restrictions there. So we've just broken it up there to make sure that it is accounted for in both situations. Sometimes you see these commitments drafted more vaguely or only accounting for rental units, so we've broken it up to make sure it's clear that it accounts for both.
And a couple of times you talked about that it was townhouses. Is it, is, it says in our report that there is possibility for row houses, multiplex, or apartment units. Are y'all considering other types of structures or just townhouses at this time?
Just townhouses. The reason why that is in there is that the UDO defines townhouses very specifically as three or more units on individual lots. And so there's a strong possibility that this is a rental community where we're not subdividing them onto individual lots. So technically, it wouldn't meet the definition of townhouse. That would be considered an apartment. But that is why we've added the design commitment that if they are not subdivided onto individual lots to meet that definition, that they will be, have vertical separations only. So in design, no matter what, they will be townhouses.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, no, no questions for me. I just had the opportunity to, to meet with the applicant a few weeks ago to talk about this case. And I think it's the right rezoning in the right place at the right time. It's a solid case, I would, I would say. Great commitments that I think bring it in, bring it in line and consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is the kind of thing I think that, that we in general would want to see on a site like this and the location that it, that it's in. This is kind of an awkward site. I appreciate the rear alleys, the commitment to affordable units. I think that there was a thoughtful approach to the location of this site. It's an area that could potentially change. There are plans in this area, but of course, you know, we don't always know that. There's always uncertainty. But I, when I review this case, when I think about it, when I look at it in the context, I think that it's a solid case. I'll be voting for it, and I would encourage my fellow council members to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. This is my neighborhood, and when I have said time and time again from this day, it's that there's no zip code or area that's going to be exempt from growth in our city. And how I've watched my own neighborhood and area change, this is what I'm talking about. I think this is a, a great example of infill development. I echo Councilmember Baker's comments. I, I literally pass this area every day. I ride the number two bus, which goes down Andrew. So many, anytime I'm on the bus, look, I look at this lot all the time. Please ride the bus. They're clean and they have Wi-Fi. So, so this is an area that is right for this type of development. A lot of activity going on in that area already. I hope that this is where we're headed in terms of other developers who want to do business in our city. The only reticence of any that I would, would voice is that I wish we could get more density on it, but I think this is a good project, and I echo Councilmember Baker's support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo the comments of my council members, also the planning commission. This is a great infill project. It's got a lot to recommend it. I just have a couple of questions for Ms. Farmer. The first one, just to confirm, so there's, I just drove by there today. There's existing commercial, there's, there's, I think there's a, maybe like a Tokyo Express or something, maybe Bojangles. So those three, like, free fast food restaurants there on the corner, will they stay there or what will happen with that, those commercial sites?
Yes, so Profit Dixon is not under contract to purchase those. Those will remain. They are under contract to purchase Strauss Drive, which is still a private drive. So they are looking at the opportunity to potentially upgrade Strauss Drive to a public street and make those accommodations. And that is why they are able to do that landscape strip on that side with the commercial because they will.
Ride the street.
Have the street, but they will not touch the commercial.
Okay, great. Next question. So you referenced the, the, the walkway across Strauss Drive to allow residents to access easily the, the, the bus shelter or the buses on Andrew. So as I drove by there, I saw that, I saw the bus stop across, on the, like, the westbound side of Andrew. Where's the bus stop on the eastbound?
If I am able to pull up my presentation, it is quite small, so I apologize, but if you can see the, the hand, these are where the, the proposed crosswalks are. And then I believe the bus stop would be right about here where my hand is here. So folks could cross the crosswalk here, come up the existing sidewalk, and then the bus stop should be about right here on this side, Route 2.
So is there a shelter there? There's not a shelter right now?
I do not believe that there is a shelter there right now.
Okay, hopefully we can upgrade that. The, my final question was about the, so you, you talked about, I know that the BPAC recommendations, it's requested like a 12-foot multi-use path, as they often do, on the, on the, what's that, like, the west side of Strauss Drive, right? And so, so I think you responded that you'll build a sidewalk there, but it'll, it'll be a five-foot wide sidewalk to match what's on the other side of Strauss Drive. And so I guess my question is that, you know, I think we want to see as much pedestrian and bike infrastructure as we can. And so, you know, I'm not sure just matching the five-foot sidewalk on the other side aesthetically is, is that important, right? So I'm wondering if you'd consider actually a larger 10-foot wide or 12-foot wide path on the Strauss Drive side to allow more bikes, pedestrians to, to access that side of Strauss Drive?
So that was something that, that we had really looked at, but we felt that it was important because the townhomes on Strauss Drive, we plan to have those to be rear alley loaded with a maximum 25-foot setback. The five-foot sidewalks allow for that, and if we were to widen the 10-foot multi-use path, it, we would potentially run into some complications. Part of that is also in looking at upgrading Strauss Drive. We're still not sure how much right-of-way is going to be needed. And so as Mayor Protem Middleton noted, we, we were trying to get as much density on the site as possible. And so incorporating that 10-foot sidewalk plus the right-of-way, I think we would potentially lose a row of units there. So it was, it was something that we looked at as a team, but the five-foot sidewalks is the most that we think we can do at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all so much. We've had all of our comments. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Commercial Center and Residential Suburban 20 and establishing the same Residential Suburban Multifamily with a Graphic Development Plan and Commercial Center with a Graphic Development Plan.
Move this red.
Move and properly second it. Madam Clark, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. I'll also entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clark, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Now let's get to the easy one. Item number 15, Consolidated Annexation Howard Property.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, council members. This is for case Z 230001/BDG 2300007, Howard Property. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Dan Jewell of Thomason Hutton for 10 parcels of land totaling 86.41 acres and located at 5778, 5788, 5838, 5858, 5880, 5896, 5962, and 5980 Wake Forest Highway. This annexation petition is for a non-contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits doing to, to it be, due to it being non-contiguous at the time of application. A companion zoning map change request is for a change from residential rural and residential suburban 20 to planned development residential 5.783 to allow up to 499 residential units and up to 12,000 square feet of non-residential space. The properties are currently designated mixed-use residential and recreation and open space on the place type map. The proposed PDR 5.783 zoning is generally consistent with the designated place types. If the zoning is approved, there will be no change to the place type designations. Thank you. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Are there any questions, technical requests, comments? Yes. Start to my left. Councilmember Cook.
Hey.
Hi, good evening. With respect to the income restrictions on housing, this is a lot more detail than I've seen previously. So I was wondering if you could break down some of it for me. I'm curious about restrictive covenants. I would assume those are already placed.
No, those are, that's a standard commitment that we usually have when there are income-restricted units. That's pretty standard. Those are run through the Community Development Department. They have a set of restrictive covenants that are, I, I don't, that is something that happens much later in the process. It's required usually prior to certificate occupancy. But that, that's a pretty standard language that we usually have.
Yeah, I guess I haven't seen it before and that's why I was wondering why it got added. But I, I, I would imagine it is standard. And then, sorry, let me just expand this. There's the 300th Certificate of Compliance. Can you explain that?
Sure. The idea is that we want to make sure that any income-restricted or affordable units are provided in a timely manner. They're not, say, left to the end and even potentially not built, right? You, a, an applicant under a PDR zoning can build up to 80% of what they have said. So to make the math easy, if they were doing a 500-unit development, they could do as few as 400 and still be compliant with the zoning. If they're proffering, say, 20 units of income-restricted, they could in theory build the 400 units and say, well, we were going to do the income-restricted ones later. We don't want to, we have, just haven't gotten there yet. And maybe they never get built. So we've tried to work on timing mechanisms in our, in our commitments to try to ensure that those income-restricted units or affordable units are provided in a timely manner.
Can you just explain like a reasonable number of Certificate of Compliance? Because 300 seems huge to me, but I, how many are?
We're trying, we're trying to get something that is between 50 and 80%. We want the project to be built out enough so that the cross subsidization of the income-restricted units can work with the penciling of the project and make sure they actually come to fruition. But we want them to be built before the 80% threshold that they would be allowed to build under the PDR zoning. So to make sure they get built, but late enough in the process that the financing works out for the app.
Can you give me numbers about these Certificate of Compliance?
What do you mean?
It says 300th. I'm just, it's-
Okay, so there's, so they, they have, on this, in this particular case, they've stated that they're going to do up to 499 units. So this puts them at about 60th, 60% of them.
I see. Okay, thank you. And then can you explain the buffer opacity?
Could you be more specific?
Sure, I can read it to you in a second. That's switching my own notes.
You mean like what buffer opacity is?
Yes, yeah, and the difference between this .4 and then we've got, I think, a .6.
So buff, buffer opacity goes from zero to one. The higher the number, the greater the amount and of plantings that need to be done or a more types of plantings that provide a better screening. That's the very nutshell version of that. There are more specifics. I believe it's a 9.4, Sarah, 9.4?
Yep.
Okay, 9.4. About if you're doing a .4 opacity or a .6 opacity, what types of exact plantings you need to do every 100 feet or so.
I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I just, just a question on timeline. I, I had a chance to visit this area early today. And I just was wondering, I know that in our report, it specifically states that there's no city road widening or projects for the roads, but I do think there's state conversations. Do you have any information on that?
I, I don't specifically on that. I know there have been conversations about doing improvements on NC 98 for quite a while. I worked at the MPO from 2016 to 2022 and we had done a study and done some plans to do some improvements on NC 98. There just hasn't been funding at the state level for that right now. So I don't believe, I can look that up and get that information to you.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything in this area of NC 98 right now on the STIP. There are some projects further west, but not in this immediate area.
Thank you. That was all.
Mr. Mayor, we've got one question. Yeah, Mr. Kane, thank you for the presentation. Just, this is one sort of small question. So on the, in the financial analysis of the project that always appears on that initial memo we get, it references transportation revenues, including Powell bill revenues. And so I know there's been a conversation in legislature about Powell bill. Will we still get that or not? So I wonder, is that, is that another something that's no longer valid? Or is that something we need to sort of have some kind of risk factor like attached to? Because I'm not sure what's going to happen to Powell bill funding.
Right. We are moving forward, until the legislature takes action, we're moving forward as the, as the current framework is the framework we're working in. That is an internal conversation we can have, especially with other departments, about having contingencies for that or addressing that issue. But we as staff are not trying to look in a crystal ball and think about what might happen.
You're not, you're not putting any kind of probability on that number.
I could not give you, I wish I had the ability to know what the state legislature's going to do. I'd be a very rich man if I did.
And so on this one, it references over 10 years. And I guess this would be Powell bill related to Strauss Drive. Is that what this, what the funding would be related to? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry. That's different, different case. Does this be Powell bill related to which road in this development?
It would be in NC 98.
98. And so this says, looks like 6,642 in Powell bill revenues over the 10-year analysis period. So it's, so it's only $6,000 over those 10 years. So it's not a huge chunk.
No.
Okay, helpful. Thank you.
Not going to do much on NC 98. Oh, Bill's got something more.
To clarify, the, the Powell bill revenues would be for the new public streets constructed as part of the development. That's where we would receive Powell bill revenues.
But again, the 6, 6,000 is a figure, so it's not a huge chunk. But it is, all helps, every dollar helps, right?
Yes.
All right, so we've gotten that out of the way and at this time, I'll declare this public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. Mr. Jewell, welcome. How much time do you think you need tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Probably nine or 10 minutes. Let me get my presentation started, if you would. Get it into presentation mode. Aaron, I may need a bit of assistance getting this in presentation mode here. As a really old person.
Should just be a quick. Control L, thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
All right, very good. Thank you for your indulgence on that. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, I am Dan Jewell. I'm the Regional Director of Thomason Hutton Landscape Architect in Private Practice, 2510 Meridian Parkway. We're now two years into this application from when we originally submitted, but that is largely on us, that timeline. And the reason for that is we spent a great amount of time, I think, refining and improving and recrafting this proposal based on a really good amount of community input that we've had over the years, as well as conversations with the staff. And you'll see also in, in stuff we've got from the Planning Commission. You're all aware that in, in late '23, the council and the commissioners adopted the new comprehensive plan. It was a long process, started in 2019. I was involved in that. And probably of all the things I've been involved with in Durham in my 40 years here, it was the most thorough engagement process I've ever been involved with. One of the most robust public discussions was around establishing a new urban growth boundary, particularly in East Durham. And the, the, the goal was to decide where water and sewer should be extended and growth should occur and where it should not. One of the other large areas of discussion was around housing. Durham's been experiencing a housing shortage for over a decade now. A housing shortage that has contributed to the high cost of available housing and where, type, how much, and, and what kind should be built. You may recall, there was also quite a bit of concern in several meetings between planning staff and the home building industry, especially the real estate community, about the contraction of the urban growth area that had been proposed as part of the comprehensive plan in several areas. We were concerned that the result in contraction of acreage would result in a reduction in the number of homes that could be built in these areas. Ultimately though, based on meetings and input from planning staff, that the reduction in land area would be more than offset by increases in allowable density. A lot of the opposition to that backed off and, and many people, including myself, spoke in front of you and the county commissioners a few years ago, supporting the comprehensive plan that you adopted. To summarize a few of the key points and how we've responded to the comprehensive plan with this proposal in front of you. The property is within the urban growth limits. Water and sewer is nearby and we will be easily extended to this neighborhood at the developer's expense. The place type map component of the comprehensive plan calls for this property to be mixed-use neighborhood. That calls for a dense, walkable mix of housing types, including apartments, townhomes, single-family homes. We're proposing exactly that. And our commitments show that we will build all three of those housing types as part of this proposal. The comprehensive plan further states for this place type, that there be a centrally located, non-residential use provided in the neighborhood, easily accessible, within a 15-minute or shorter walk from the new homes that will be constructed. And we are in fact committing to a commercial component as part of this community and all the homes will be within a 15-minute walk. Further, we note that a few months ago, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a, a small commercial node at the corner of Kemp and 98, which you will be seeing soon. And that would certainly also be within a 15-minute walk of, of most of this new neighborhood. We're also committed to affordable housing component in all of the housing types. We are, have the commitment that each of the house, the three housing types will have an affordable housing component. And of course, we're doing a contribution to the Durham Public Schools Fund. Most importantly, we've had continuous neighborhood engagement, particularly over the last nine months. There have been four neighborhood meetings, including one in person, that our neighbors helped to organize at the Ruhr Tan Club last fall. And back in January, I hosted a meeting in my office with some of the leadership of the Preserve Rural Durham folks. We listened to the concerns of the neighbors and made adjustments to our proposal over the time as best we could to help address those. The most impactful early adjustment was from the density with the, we had originally submitted 650 units, seven and a half units per acre, when we have now reduced that to 499 units, which is nearly a 25% reduction in the density from the original proposal. Recall that this mixed-use neighborhood described in the comp plan calls for a dense mix of residential uses. That's the words right out of the comp plan. Density is a relative term. And whereas we believe that our original proposal was within the range of what the comp plan called for, we did make that adjustment based on, on neighborhood concerns. We also know that one of the primary concerns of the residents of this part of Durham is the ever-increasing traffic from new development. Pull up another slide. There we go. And even though that was one of the main drivers of the establishment of the urban growth limits during the comp plan conversation, we also wanted to do our part to mitigate those impacts from the new neighborhood. One of the ways to mitigate was to reduce the density by 25%, as I said. The other was to take responsibility for a good number of offsite road improvements at the intersections that are affected. Our text commitment lists improvements at 11 separate intersections. And this map shows the breadth of where those, those impacts will, those improvements will take place. And these are shown on this slide and represent millions of dollars in road improvement. Importantly, those improvements include three new traffic signals in this stretch of 98, from Kemp Road out to one of our new driveways and farther east. These new signals will cause traffic to slow down and they'll also cause traffic to stop at interview intervals. We know that one of the issues the neighbors have right now is those whose driveways back on the 98 have a hard time getting out and getting back in. So this will cause breaks in the continuous traffic and hopefully make it easier for them to get in and out. Our traffic engineer, Rinald Stevenson with DRMP, is here this evening and will be available to answer questions during your Q and A period when that comes up later. We also heard concerns about buffering of adjacent residents who front on 98 and preserving the visual character of the road. To that end, we have now incorporated text commitments to provide, provide a 30-foot landscape buffer along the back of those lots and a 30-foot no-build-and-no-parking setback along the frontage of Highway 98 to be in keeping with the existing character and building setback of 98 along that frontage. And recently, based on the meeting in our office a few months ago, in our review of the zoning staff report, we felt it was appropriate to not only provide a public greenway easement because there is a public greenway thrown through the site, we have decided also commit to building that trail. So we will build that greenway trail from north to south throughout the project. We also agreed to adjust the neighbors' concerns of the potential proximity of opposed apartment buildings and parking to the residents to the north and the south. And to that end, we've committed to a 200-foot minimum setback for both building and parking from those property lines to any building, budding, and, and parking lot. And also so that all uses within the neighborhood will be connected to each other with sidewalks and greenway trails to further reinforce our commitment and sincerity in making this a walkable neighborhood. You'll note in the staff report, the Planning Commission recommended approval 7 to 1. A recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission is not a common occurrence these days. We also though very much appreciated the written comments that several of the commissioners left that weren't articulated during the Planning Commission hearing a few months ago. Particularly those concerns about stormwater management, activating open space in impervious surface limits. So we look another, took another look at those. Therefore, we are going to add three new proffers tonight. I've already provided those in writing to Mr. Kane, so he has those in front of him. We're going to commit to a higher level of stormwater management. We're going to manage to the 25-year storm rather than the 10, which is the, the base right now for public works. We're going to commit to installing at least two playgrounds and a open playfield. And we're going to commit to limiting our impervious surface to 50% maximum rather than the 70% currently allowed by the UDO. To summarize, we think we're creating the type of neighborhood envisioned for this location by the comprehensive plan, are provided, providing much-needed housing of various types and income levels, including workforce housing, will be building a great public amenity through doing a public greenway trail through the site that would be of great expense to the city someday if they were to build it. And are being respectful of the neighbors as we can with the density reduction, the landscape buffers, the Highway 98 setbacks, and the commitment to locating any apartment buildings and facilities well away from the neighborhood properties. We think that our proposal provides the right balance between the need for more housing, much more in keeping with what we think would be palatable to the neighbors, and meet the goals of the comprehensive plan, and hope you will agree with the Planning Commission recommendation and vote for approval of our request. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you. I have one online speaker. It's Ross, Katie Ross, can you hear me? Ms. Ross, Katie Ross, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Ross is not responding.
She's not? Okay.
Not.
Hello, hello.
Oh, there she is.
I'm here, sorry.
Hello, Ms. Ross, you have three minutes, welcome.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm on the Howard property.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, okay, just I was looking too. All right, so I have actually sent much of this to you, to all of you on the council a couple of months ago, but I'm going to repeat it and update it. I want to point out to you that the Office of Budget Management predicted in 2020 that Durham would need 60,000 to 66,000 new housing units by 2050 to meet a projected population increase of, I think it was 150,000 people. But then, but what has happened is that you all have approved, have gone way ahead of their projection that maybe 2,000 units a year needs to be approved to meet the goal by 2050. We're five years in, and through April of this year, you have, you alone on voting on public hearings have approved 24,665 units. According to the comprehensive plan and the Office of Budget Management, every five years, only 11,000, little over 11,000 units needs to be approved. So you are way above that. But you only approve a small percentage of the units that are approved. The planning department approves at least twice as many units as you do. And so if you take their approval of probably 40,000 units in that time, you have already exceeded in five years the 60,000 units that the Office of Budget Management and the planning department and the comprehensive plan anticipated would be needed by 2050. So just think about that for a second. So there is no housing crisis in Durham. In fact, there is a housing glut on the horizon. You are, you are three times at least more than you should be if you were proceeding cautiously and rationally, because the damage to the environment, and you're going to hear a lot about that coming up in this hearing, that's permanent. When you're putting up housing units and you're mowing down forests and you're desiccating our water sources, those are permanent, and you're doing it completely without necessity and completely above what is predicted in the comprehensive plan. Secondly, I'd like to point out that the comprehensive plan and those predictions of population-
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Okay, there you go.
All right, the next person, well, that was my only online speaker, so I'm now going to be in-person. All right, Tammy Sawaya. I'm going to go ahead and call a few names up since we have so many speakers. So if you were cue right over here after Ms. Sawaya. Jerry Ray. Donna Stenbach.
Mayor, we have it in order of our presentation. Is there a way we can start from the beginning and go in that order? Start with Wanda Allen?
You all are going to speak, so that's-
Yeah.
I'll oblige tonight.
Can we go ahead and get our presentation up? And while they're loading the presentation, I wanted to go on the record, I agree with Erin, we had 12 families-
Is your time?
No, it's not my time. We had 12 families-
I wanted to count, that's all.
That did not receive their notification, so.
Do you want me to do slides?
Please. Okay. Are you ready? I'm ready. Now you can start.
Why don't you all give me the first five of your presentation?
Wanda Allen, Donna Stenbach, Tom Freeman, Tina Motley, and Becky Freeman. That's the first five.
All right.
You ready?
Remarked, get set, go.
Okay, let's go, let's go. Okay. Southeast Durham is in a crisis, as the map is clearly marked Howard Place adds to the crisis. We have rural gentrification, we have environmental issues, we have traffic issues, we have infrastructure issues. Tonight, as each person speaks, they will present facts that support Southeast Durham is in a crisis. Please, please note this slide. On February 11th, at the Planning Commission, a pledge was made by the applicant that they would be responsible for any damage from blasting. The planning department and the city attorney office confirmed that blasting offers could not be included. Please note this slide. The current zoning is RR, and the proposed UDO is not high-density. It will be two houses per acre. While this slide is important, the applicant stated at the Planning Commission on February 11th that the new UDO would allow for a higher density. Their proposal would be the best for the residents and the environment. The chart clearly shows that the new UDO will create, will not create high-density. It is necessary to present these two slides to ensure the facts and the data is accurate. As each slide is presented tonight, there will be facts that confirm Southeast Durham is in a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Donna Stenbach.
Do your slides. Yes, please. Good evening, Durham City Council. My name is Donna Stenbach, and my address is on file. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham. Rural gentrification is in southeast Durham. Bull City Public Investigators reported average property tax increases of 79% across Durham with the tax appraisals. The key issue that drove these increases in our area was the new development at the high end up against, you know, the Critical Watershed and the UGB. In the left chart, see the northern area, Rougemont got 56% and Crowsdale got 57%, while in the southeast, Baptist Road averages 164% change, and Little Rogers Road is 169% change near the UGB and the Critical Watershed with triassic soil that will not perp for septic, and you cannot find a well for water. This land is left to woods of farming or is lucky rural development rules. The grand total average for southeast Durham was 162% change, not the 79 in their appraisals for last year. These evaluations caused much problem at my personal house, because our house went up doubled, and, and that was after a forest deferment, and it has tripled in 10 years. These are inflated appraisals, and Carrie and I are retired, fixed income, and we've seen many of our friends leave Durham. The major driver for the land increase we discussed is the new development, and we have little comparable to measure for looking at how to compare what other houses and land is available. Next, I'd, we'd like to thank the Environmental Affairs Board for their first analysis using their tools for this development. They will be speaking more to the substantial environmental risk and critical issues to the environment of southeast Durham. Next slide. Masquerading, clear-cutting, and blasting are causing sediment pollution in our streams, wetlands, and Falls Lake. Property in the white outline is Howard's property. The 35% of the comprehensive plan policies identified by planning are not met, and this is a conservative percent. The top of the picture is, let's say, north for my descriptions, and this comes from Durham Maps.
Thank you so much. Next is Tom Freeman.
Good evening, Thomas Freeman. Address is on file, lifelong resident of Durham. For yours, for you folks who are filing with the package, I'll be addressing slides eight, nine, 10, and 11. I'll begin with slide eight, and I'll begin with reminding you that this is a photo of Lit Creek. It's obvious, it's the mud hole to the lower section of the lake. These are waters of the United States, I would add. It is fortuitous that we would meet here tonight in the week of Save Drinking Water Week. This, by the way, folks, is the drinking water for the city of Raleigh and many of the municipalities they serve. I'll go on to point out Policy 86, which is a policy to protect water resources for the adjacent political units, city of Raleigh being one. Trust your eyes, folks, they do not lie. The stormwater best management practices for triassic basin soils is not working. Believe your eyes. This is proof, this is proof. Exhibit A. Next slide, please. The textual commitments identifies 499 maximum, maximum units. But there is no commitment on masquerading. Really? 499 units on 86.4 acres? Really? But you won't declare that this will be masqueraded. Masqueraded sites, I would add that if it's over four acres, it's a masqueraded site. Slide 10. I'd like to recap further. Lit Creek drainage consists of 3,211 acres. Only five subdivisions have been built out, five developments. Forty-six are either in the works or under construction or have not begun. Forty-six of these approved by this body and are under construction, many have not even begun, not begun. This is 11% developed, 89% have been approved but are not online. I would like to remind you of the cumulative impacts, they are absolutely overwhelming. Slide 11. Let's digress a bit. Let's move from the environmental matters to the built environment. Let's look at the sidewalks. Have you ever walked beside a busy highway at 55 miles an hour, 25 feet from a sidewalk? Howard's property extends 2,800 feet east to west along NC 98. However, only one-third of the Howard property is contiguous to NC 98. The remaining two-thirds of the adjacent land is owned by private parties. The situation begs to question, the developer making a proposal for full frontage-
Thank you.
-include those private parcels.
Thank you.
If you ask for transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I, just real quick, I ask a lot of young people to listen in on the council meetings, and the beautiful thing about democracy is, in doing public comment or at this stage, you can, you can feel free to say what you like. I just want to make sure we understand to the folks that are watching, no people are drinking out of the lake. It does go through a filtering process. So to your point, I get what you're saying, but it's not, no one's drinking directly out of the lake, for those who are watching. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Prentem, and members of Durham City Council. Hope you're doing well tonight. My name is Tina Motley Pearson, and my address is on file. So I, I know the importance of endangered species is often overlooked, especially when it comes to areas designated for development. But obviously, there are regulations, and I think it's noteworthy to point out there are protected species within one mile of the property. Carolina Darter is an endangered species of fish. Dissected toothed wart is also protected. Next slide. Spangler Environmental was hired to assess the property in 2022, but I'd like to point out that an aquatic survey was not conducted at this site, but it should have been. As you can imagine, it's awfully inconvenient to have endangered or threatened species on land designated for development. So how do you find something when you don't look for it? And I'd like to draw your attention to the next slide, which notes that according to a letter from DEQ in 2022, there were seven streams on site flowing into impaired Lit Creek. Next slide. Which is noteworthy, because according to the zoning map change report regarding stream buffers, it says none on site. You can see that in that top corner, and it's the same with the floodplain. It says none on site, and there's, there is a floodplain. Stormwater Services Division identified nine possible streams. So why are no stream buffers required with up to nine streams on the property? Are we having a Twilight Zone moment? Are streams appearing and disappearing and reappearing in Durham according to who benefits? Thank you, and please vote no on this project. That's all.
Thank you. Becky Freeman. And after Ms. Becky, I have Pam Andrews, Pam Williams, Mike Andrews, Ms. Coats, and Deborah Andrews.
Thank you.
And pardon my disrespect, that is Sheriff, former Sheriff Mike Andrews.
I'm Rebecca Freeman, and my information is on file, thank you. Slide 16 is the map of North Carolina Natural Heritage Area. As you can see on the, on the map there, the pink shading shows the natural heritage area in the southern section of Howard property. It is 11 acres. And on the right is an enlarged picture of the natural heritage area. It is 11 acres. That includes a one-acre floodplain. Textual commitment, number 14, commits to no development in the floodplain. Note that development in the floodplain is prohibited by Policy 79. The one-acre floodplain is within the natural heritage area of 11 acres, but there's no commitment to save or protect all 11 acres. Slide 17. The map of the North Carolina Natural Heritage Area shows that the area there in Perry Farm is a high priority area for environmental issues and concerns and sensitive areas. Okay? So slide number 18. My question is, how does Howard property exceed Policy 79 according to the zone report you have tonight? Policy 79 says that states that protect Durham's most sensitive natural areas, including floodplains, wetlands, wildlife habitats, hillsides, drinking water sources, critical watersheds, and natural heritage areas from the impacts of development. Protect Durham's most sensitive natural areas from these impacts, from impact of development. The developer commits to no development in the one-acre floodplain, which is in the box there that is encircled with, with red. But there's no commitment for the additional 10 acres of the wildlife corridors and natural heritage areas that surround it. The Planning Commission found on February 11th, 2025, that Policy 79 was not met, but for the same, tonight's zoning report finds that Policy 79 exceeds UDO houses possible. Just to meet Policy 79, the developer must commit to preserve the entire 11 acres of natural heritage area that includes the one-acre floodplain. If only one acre floodplain is protected and there's no protection, a commitment for the other 10 acres of heritage, national heritage area, seems to me that Policy 79 should not be met, if they're only protecting less than 10% of the sensitive areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Pam Andrews.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pam Andrews, Wake Forest Highway. I heard a lot of talk about the natural heritage area during Sheffield Farms, so I wanted to research it. I went out and found out. I called the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program and spoke with Director Misty Franklin. Misty sent me the following statement. Our recommendation for protection of the aquatic species associated with Lit Creek and the tributaries will be the- I called the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program and spoke with Director Misty Franklin. Misty sent me the following statement. Our recommendation for protection of the aquatic species associated with Lit Creek and the tributaries will be the conservation of a vegetated buffer 100-foot wide width across Lit Creek and its tributaries. Likewise, any Douglas bittercrisp, which is in the picture here, is a rare plant species with most likely to occur within streamside zones last documented on this area with very high accuracy, March 10, 2021. Finally, Durham's Unified Development Ordinance in 2024 encouraged protection of the Natural Heritage Area in Sections 8.10 and 13.1. Let's look at those. This just points out the high frequency, very high frequency accuracy, and the significantly rare plant, the Douglas bittercrisp, which is on this property. Any conflict, in this ordinance, it says, "Any conflict may be superseded or supplemented by more current information from the North Carolina Heritage Program as determined by the Planning Director, Misty Franklin," who I add this letter from. Next. Section 13.1 from the UDO says, "The preservation of significant features. To the maximum extent possible, subdivisions shall protect habitats of rare and unusual plants or wildlife as documented in the established Durham Inventory of the State Natural Heritage Listing." Then I spoke with Brooke Massa, next, Tammy, was my next contact. No wildlife quarter was noted in this review. She noted that all staff in our planning department has not been trained on the triangle connectivity collaboration, and therefore, they incorrectly stated there was no wildlife corridor in this parcel. I can confirm, this is her talking, that there is a known timber rattlesnake in close proximity to this project. The timber rattlesnake is a state-listed special concern species and is extremely rare in the northern Piedmont. The data shows us that a large portion of this property is an important habitat patch for dry-wet hardwood and mixed forest in the general wet Mesa hardwood forest. Both are rated high priority. This is a habitat for species like the salamander, the snake, the box turtle, and many other species like the neotropical migratory birds that breed in these habitats. So, it is very important part of the habitat network in this area for Durham County. Lastly, the NC Wildlife considers the Natural Heritage Areas, the NHNA's, as the highest priority for the permanent conservation of land. We recommend that this community aims to conserve these areas and to buffer them from development impacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Yeah, good evening. My name's Pam Williams. My name is on file. I'm going to be talking about transportation and the volume. The comprehensive policy, Plan Policy 69, 70, 71, 72, and 73 are not met by this site. This project does not reduce carbon emission. It is car-centric, no 15-minute neighborhood, no nearby jobs, no continuous sidewalk to any amenities. This road topography, it has hilly terrain, guardrail of steep slopes, and 22 driveways within the project limits. Capacity is refined to take more of the individual road characteristics into consideration. Changes in road characteristics and any other relative factors, not just the volume. NC-98 capacity is 14,600 ADT based on NCDOT Piedmont's table. The existing volume in 2023, this is two years ago, was 15,000 ADT, and this project will add almost 4,500 ADT and increase the traffic to 19,500 ADT. Thirty-three percent over capacity. The 19,500 ADT, next slide. Oh, you're there. Okay. The 19,500 ADT does not include the additional vehicles per day from over 23 developments that are within this area under construction since 2023. An addition of 62,400 ADT is proposed in this area, that's in that little square right there, will be dispersed among NC-98, US-70, Sherwood Road, and already, which are already over capacity, and Leesville Road. Next slide. Why aren't developers required to put in a wider left turn lane, 17 feet five, and provide for the proposed cross-section as proposed in the joint MPO's 2018 NC-98 corridor study? I'm not asking y'all to answer, but I want to make you aware that there is a corridor study that was done. There are no transportation projects planned in this area by our MTP, which must be in the MTP before it can become a DOT project. So, our MTP is not proposing anything in this area. There is a small project up close to 85 or 70. Remember, these numbers are estimated to be 62,400 vehicles per day, over 6,800 units, 18,000 people within the next two to three years, as approved by the city council with no cumulative impact study. Yes, we do have lights going in, and yes, the light for Kemp Road is already in, so they will not be putting that light in. They may put a light in at their entrance, and they may be required to put a light at Southview. That is all dependent if it's warranted. There's also other developments that will be putting these lights in.
Thank you.
Besides them. Thank you.
What's your name, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Gary McLean. My address is on file. I just want to voice my opinion that I am opposed to the rezoning and development of this Howard place on Highway 98. I had a personal, personal circumstance that occurred on February 7, 2025. I live at the end of the Wake Electric Power Grid, Power Co-op, and my power was interrupted for 12 hours due to an accident on Highway 98 at Zinc House Brewery with a tractor-trailer and two vehicles. Speed was not a factor. The power was out for 12 hours, and there's a lot going on in this area with the school and just the traffic and the shopping center at Four Points. And now, if we have this development, we'd have probably, well, maybe 4,500 more vehicles on this already overburdened road. It's a two-lane secondary road, minimum shoulders, and it's just, it's treacherous. So, because of this, I am opposed to the rezoning of this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton, City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to focus on traffic, and I would just like to note that there are four major highways that come in, or multiple roads that come into Durham. 501, 15501, 55, I-40, I-85, 885, and 70. Highway 98 carries multiple traffic from those locations eastward towards Wake Forest, North Raleigh, Franklin County, and traffic is unbearable. With this project, it will add, in the red there that Ms. Williams just spoke about, and with this project, it will add over 62,400 vehicle trips per day will be added to the roadways in this area, and that came, those totals on the figure from Ms. Williams from the previous slide. In regards to the project at Howard property, how will kids walk to school? There, there are no walkable trails to school. There are no sidewalks to school. There are no businesses to walk to from that property out on Highway 98. The entrances that are being designated and the egress, ingress, and egress is on a hill, and then the exit is a right turn only, which will take you towards Wake County. There are blind spots, and over the last five years, in a, in a distance of a mile and a half, there have been over 45 accidents that have been recorded by the Department of Transportation. As Mr. Williams just spoke, Mr. McLean just spoke just a moment ago, there was a major accident on NC-98, which there were 700 homes and businesses that were without power. Please note the traffic. It is heavily traveled now, and this will add to extra burden and infrastructure on our law enforcement, our emergency services, and our techni, emergency medical technicians. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So, what we're going to do is we're going to take a break right now. It is 9 o'clock, and we'll be back at 9:10 to resume. We are in recess.
I came to this city to develop leadership and supervisory skills. I stayed because of the city's culture and dedication to serving residents. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the whole city, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
We, the people.
Nosotros de gente.
Women renmin.
Mi adumaviu.
Hum sablog. We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men.
And women.
Are created equal.
And shall be afforded.
The inalienable right.
To fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
Owning a home provides a sense of financial stability, family, community, and pride. But housing prices are now higher than ever, making it hard for many Durham residents to afford their first home. That's why the city of Durham is offering the Down Payment Assistance Program to support eligible individuals with up to $80,000 in 0% interest forgivable loans to purchase a house within the city limits. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program. Visit this site or call to find out if you qualify for the program.
Radical reckoning. God, I could not solve all the problems, but I'm on record with you that I tried. For Anne Atwater. Poverty is to partake in tallying all that's owed, unaccounted for, past-due bills, their unpaid debts. It is eight leavened loaves until a flour sack empties to become a daughter's dress. It is what rises in you while living poor in a homeland your ancestors made wealthy. You have no name for it, surviving on domestic work, single mothering in a house that leans into the street and wind moves through. You tally up the housing improvements, they tally up the rent increase. You tally up moonlit prayers, gone unanswered, an endless measure of black madness. You tally up the times you listen, that you forgive your enemies of freedom, of passage, of human happiness. You know suffering, how your work is a calculated survival that gives the suffering meaning, a tally that comes to this radical reckoning.
Falling behind on your bills? Even if you owe more than you can handle, you still have rights. Most legit debt collectors follow the rules, but bad debt collectors don't. They break the law. So if you get a call like this.
If you don't pay, we will have you arrested and deported.
Or this.
This is your final warning. Pay up now, or we'll contact your employer and make them pay.
Hang up and report it to the Federal Trade Commission. You have the right to be treated fairly no matter what. That means debt collectors can't use abusive language, threaten violence, or harass you. Or call you before 8:00 in the morning or after 9:00 at night. They can't lie or pretend to be someone they're not.
I'm an attorney, and we'll take legal action if you don't pay this debt right away.
Or get you to pay a debt that doesn't even exist. They can't have you arrested or deported, or tell anyone about your debt. Bad debt collectors like to knock you off your guard to get an advantage, create a sense of urgency, and rush you. They'll say anything to get you to pay right now. Instead, hang up and report it to the Federal Trade Commission at ftc.gov/complaint. We've stopped a lot of bad debt collectors. Help us stop more. For more information about debt collection, visit consumer.gov/debt.
Se está atrasando con el pago de sus facturas. Aunque deba más de lo que pueda pagar, igual sigue teniendo derechos. La mayoría de los cobradores de deudas legítimos cumplen las reglas, pero los malos cobradores de deudas no lo hacen. Infrigen la ley. Así que si recibe una llamada como esta.
Si no paga, lo haremos arrestar y deportar.
O como esta.
Esta es su última advertencia. Pague ya, o nos comunicaremos con su empleador para obligarlo a pagar.
Cuelgue el teléfono y reporte el incidente a la Comisión Federal de Comercio, FTC. Usted tiene derecho a ser tratado justamente de todas maneras. Eso significa que los cobradores de deudas no pueden usar lenguaje abusivo, amenazarlo con violencia, ni acosarlo. Ni tampoco pueden llamarlo antes de las 8:00 de la mañana o después de las 9:00 de la noche. No pueden mentir, ni hacerse pasar por quienes no son.
Soy abogado, y si no paga esta deuda de inmediato, entablaré una acción legal en su contra.
O hacerle pagar una deuda que ni siquiera existe. No lo pueden hacer arrestar, ni deportarlo. Ni tampoco pueden hablar con nadie sobre su deuda. A los malos cobradores de deudas les gusta atacarlo con la guardia baja para sacar ventaja, crear una sensación de urgencia y apurarlo. Dirán lo que sea para conseguir que pague de inmediato. En su lugar, cuelgue el teléfono y reporte el incidente a la Comisión Federal de Comercio FTC en ftc.gov/queja. Ya hemos frenado a muchos malos cobradores de deudas. Ayúdenos a frenar más. Para más información sobre cobranza de deudas, visite consumidor.gov/deuda.
All right. Back to business. All right, are you Ms. Coats? All right, sounds good. We're on track. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Florence Coats. I live on 5816 Wake Forest Highway. And my main concern is the blasting from the building to the building behind me, because I will be backed up to the property, and also the highway. I think before anything else is progressed, that something needs to be done to 98 Highway. It needs to be widened so people can get out of the driveways. Because last week, I was going to church. I left home at 25 minutes after 5:00. I was supposed to be at church at 6:00 o'clock. I didn't get there till 16:10, about 3 miles. And that's the way the traffic is. And there has been several accidents right in front of my house, or thereabout. There's been two right recently. The one down below me at the livery, and then the one right there at my house. About three weeks apart. And it's hard for me to get into driveway, into highway, out of my drive. And even coming home from an errand, people get behind me, flashing lights for me to go faster. Then when I turn in, in my driveway, they blow the horn and give me the finger. That's what I have to deal with. And I think something needs to be done to 98 Highway before anything else is done. So people can travel. I mean, it's backed up by my house every day, every day. It's hard to get in or out of the driveway. Either way, I go. And I think y'all need to take all of that into consideration in making the decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Deborah Andrews.
Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Deborah Andrews. I live on Wake Forest Highway. Have grown up in the community of this proposed development all my life. I've lived in this area. In fact, Mr. Jewell's client, his family sold me my house out there, and they've also built a couple of more houses out there. We're not trying to be bad neighbors. We have true concerns, having lived out there. Try to travel the road daily. You can't get in and out of your driveway. And Mr. Jewell, I appreciate what you said about the stoplights. There is one currently up at Kemp Road, which in the mornings, when I'm looking at my window, trying to drink my coffee, traffic backs up all the way down 98. I'm sure part of that is due to the traffic at Neal School. And I know when they open that charter school at Kemp Road, it's not going to get any better. And with the proposal that they're not going to do anything to 98, on 98 till 2050, that's 25 years. Hopefully, we'll all still here, but there's some probability some of us aren't going to be. And in 25 years, if they're not going to make any improvements to 98 till 2050, how much more traffic are we looking at? I mean, we have so much now going between Durham and, like Mike said, Raleigh, I mean, Franklinton, Zebulon, but I mean, it's a thoroughfare from county to county. So, like I said, we're not trying to be bad neighbors, but we live there. We deal with this daily. And we just want our voices heard. You know, because right now, we don't feel, when it comes to the county, and we don't live in the city, we have no representation. So our voice is all we have. And we just want somebody to hear and understand and realize we're not trying to be bad neighbors.
Thank you so much, Ms. Swaya.
Okay, all right. Tammy Swaya, my name is on file. County Commissioner, City Commissioner, I'm sorry. Just to reiterate what Deborah just said, just keep in mind that we're only 50% bid out of all the approved developments out there. And so what I'm going to speak on is the first responder crisis. And I want to point back to this graph that was done in March of 2024, showing the response times of Station 8 and Station 17, which would service this annexation. As you can see, we're above 6 minutes response time. You've got the charter school that's going to be open in August on Kemp Road. They're high priority and high occupancy. By ISO guidelines, they should have a 4 to 6 response time. We've already got problems in March of 2024. And then you're going to add this annexation. And the problem with this annexation is the only exits are on 98 Highway. We've already got a problem on 98 Highway. And then you've got the charter school that's going to be there. It's only going to exasperate the problem. You can see here on the 2024 runs that Station 8 is getting more, is getting busier. Station 17 is getting busier. Station 8 does not have a ladder truck. And as you know, with apartments and townhomes, you need a ladder truck. The closest ladder truck is on Station 17. We do not have a fire station out in our area, which is what we desperately need. The problem is, is that we've built too much too soon. And I am opposed to this annexation because we need to catch up with the infrastructure. We don't need to do this now. You're putting us all in harm's way. And then we also know that we're behind in the police. In February, there was a 26% vacancy rate. I went today to ChatGPT just to see what the vacancy rate is now. And it's showing 27.8%. We're not getting any better. And so you're going to put this area, that's going to be now city, and the closest city department is seven miles away, is in Wellens Village. And then we've just talked about the 98 traffic. That's the only way to get there. Only way in, just in out, I'll say it again, of this annexation is in 98 Highway. That's the biggest issue. You're going to put people's lives in danger because of the location. We have got to do something about infrastructure or figure something out on 98 Highway before we would build out this property. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerry Ray, Ms. Berryman, Kay Steinbach, Steinbach, and Robin Barefoot. You, Jerry Ray?
Yep.
All right.
My name is Jerry Ray. I'm very nervous, so y'all bear with me. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to be here and present what I'm going to present. Again, I am nervous, and my voice is going to crack. I want to talk to you about, not what's happening in the future, but what's happening right now. As of last night, from 8:00 to 10:00, 2 hours last night, if you see on the screen, this is what happened in a 2-hour timeframe. I first thought, well, let's talk about shortage of EMS, shortage of ambulances. Well, let's talk about no ambulances. We had a female in cardiac arrest last night. No ambulance available. Our 911 dispatchers, who, they are the heartbeat of fire police and EMS. They are our, they are our life support. That dispatcher was struggling so hard. She went to Wake County, what she's calling Wake County, Granville County, Person County, Raleigh. She is calling everywhere to try to get an ambulance for this lady that is in a cardiac arrest. Thinking, the city of Durham, the city of medicine? Are you kidding me? Anyway, one of the calls, the call's up at the top left. A chaplain was needed last night. If you all know what chaplains do, they really help the police because they calm the situation when somebody has deceased. The 911 dispatcher says, "We cannot dispatch a chaplain to your scene because we're too busy." That was, and I paraphrase, but that's what he said, "Too busy. We're not dispatching a chaplain to your site" last night. Heartbreaking to hear. It's extremely heartbreaking to hear these dispatchers go through what they're going through every day. Hear me, every day in Durham, our 911 communicators are reaching out to other counties for an EMS, for an ambulance, every day. I'm going to say that one more time, every day. So again, our dispatchers are just running, running ragged right now. And I want to flip the page a little bit. Last night, also in this 2-hour timeframe, on the Sheriff Department side, house breaking into on Miller Springs Road, he called, no response. He waited an hour, sheriff deputies never responded. You know what he did? If you look at the bottom, well, if you, anyway. The guy was so frustrated after an hour, he called 911 back. He said, "I have tied the suspect up." That's what he said. You can hear this call on the 911. Tied him up, I don't know if he used zip ties, I don't know if he used rope, don't know what he used. Tied him up. Took the law in his own hands and told the dispatcher, "He's tied up. I'm leaving, pretty much, you can do what you want to, but he's here." Still, the sheriff deputies were 20 minutes after that. Hour and, hour and 20 minutes before they got there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I want to thank you for acknowledging the work of our 911 dispatchers. The manager and I was on the phone last night about 10:00 to 10:30. It was an unusually high-volume night last night. We were fully staffed and thank the other surrounding counties for support as we show up for them when they need us, which does happen. Thank you for acknowledging their work. Next, I have Ms. Berryman.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Cindy Berryman Hutch.
Okay. All right, just next time, just type it out for me. I just have Ms. Berryman. Unless somebody else did this list. Oh.
Yeah, that's okay.
Gotcha.
And I do live on Wake Forest Highway, and my address is on record.
Just to save you all time, I don't need your address. I know you all say it's on file, I know where it comes from, I don't need it.
The last meeting we did, it wasn't one of these meetings. And I just want to kind of echo everybody's concerns that I've spoken so far, as far as like all the environmental issues, the traffic issues. Oh my goodness, that's just mind-blowing, how that's increased. One of the things that I'm concerned about, too, is because I'm partially blind, and so my mailbox is on, you know, the road. And it's a challenge sometimes, you know, just making my way down there. And now it's going to be increased traffic. So I'm not sure if anybody's, you know, mentioned anything about the placement of the mailboxes with the additional traffic and, you know, if there's going to be like merging lanes with concrete barriers that are proposed to go in the middle of the road. Anyway, I've just not heard anybody mention anything about, you know, the mailboxes. But that's, you know, there's other issues that, you know, people have that are personal to them. So I just thought I would, you know, enter that into the record. And also, I had an issue a week ago calling 911. I did not get an answer. I tried three times. And so I finally decided I would text Pam and Mike Andrews. They're my neighbors. And we went to school together, too. But anyway, it just so happens that we're neighbors now. And so they were able to get a fire truck and then an ambulance to come out to my house. Everything turned out to be okay. But it, when I called, it rang three times, and then it clicked, and I thought somebody was picking up. And then it started ringing again. So I hung up, and I called a couple more times, and I got the same response, which was no response. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, put that on the record, too, that I had an issue calling 911 from my house. So, but anyway. I just want to also say that I'm opposed to the rezoning for this development. And thank you. Thank you for listening.
Absolutely. And just so you'll know, we don't have jurisdiction over mailbox placement. But if you do contact USPS, United States Postal Services, they can help you with accommodating in the placement of your mailbox.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
We were getting that while you were talking up here. All right. Ms. Steinbach?
Steinbach.
Steinbach?
Thank you very much. My name is Kerry Steinbach. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all this evening. I'm hoping that my comments may help inspire y'all to make very wise, very common-sense decisions when it comes on how we grow Durham. Because of course Durham is very precious to all of us. One of the things I will just mention briefly, I also had an incident with EMS. My son was going through chemotherapy. He had a reaction to the Cobalt in his treatment. We called his oncologist. He told me to immediately get him to the closest hospital I could. We called 911. They told me 40 minutes at best. Doctor said, "Put him in the car, drive him as quick as you can to Raleigh, to Wake," and that's what I had to do to save my son's life. It's not an inconvenience. It is an absolute fact that people's lives are put in danger. I do want to speak to what I consider to be the most precious thing we have in Durham, and that's our children. I am a 35-year educator. Spent time in Durham County and Granville County teaching. I love kids, that all my passion, and it should be all of us. It warmed my heart when I heard Mayor Utah talk and Mayor Pro Tem on how precious our kids are and how losing even one is just inconscionable. And I guarantee you, there's not a person in this room, if you saw a child in danger, physical danger, you would do everything you possibly could to rescue that child and bring him to safety. Unfortunately, our passions are not quite as strong when it comes to their education. If they're in danger educationally, we don't have that same passion. When we look at what this growth in Durham is doing to our schools in particular, the three schools that serve this area are going to be Spring Valley Elementary, Neal, and Southern. I'm going to speak mostly on just the capacities and what may be happening. You see the capacities at the top of each of these schools. Second line will tell you how many students were there when school started. If you look down toward the bottom, you're going to see what the potential increase is going to be to each of these schools when these developments come online. And particularly, that elementary school is going to almost double in capacity. These teachers cannot teach when you overload a classroom. If you've never been in one, it is horrible. Think of this, get in an elevator, have 12 people push in behind you and shove you in the corner. How do you feel? That's the anxiety our teachers are dealing with when they're trying to teach in an overcrowded classroom and trying to give these students the instructions they need. We cannot keep overcrowding our schools by not waiting for our inner structure to catch up with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your service and education. We share that. I am... Is there a Corey? Corey Hilevadi? Okay, you can come on up as well. Madam Clerk, I was just finishing this list up first, but thank you. All right. Yep, next up is Robin Barefoot. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name's Robin Barefoot. I'm repping my PRD green t-shirt tonight. In the 45 slides just presented, PRD has outlined dozens of dire consequences attributable to overdevelopment in southeast Durham. These slides encapsulate two years in which the council has been provided data, policy analysis, maps, research, comparative studies, testimony, photos, and jars of polluted water. And during these two years, the council has dismissed the vigorous and verifiable evidence about adverse outcomes. Instead, this body has, by a consistent four-to-three vote, overwhelmingly approved scores of developments in southeast Durham. At public meetings with developers and with planning department staff, the residents of Durham have requested responsible development, all to no avail. I have just one question. Who do you guys work for? Councilman Middleton, you will say you work for the unhoused, but you ignore confirmed data that the buildout of Durham does not make housing affordable, just like it didn't in San Francisco. Council members Caballero and Rist, you will say that you work for the 15-minute city, and if we don't approve this project, the owner can build anyway. But you hide the truth that before private equity-backed national builders started dictating how the planning department could do its work, developing these lands was not plausible or desirable. Mayor Williams, you will say that you work for the dope Durham of the future and that we need more housing and a cool convention center to seal Durham's brand and compete, but you disregard the available venues already in Durham and in the greater triangle, and you miss the biggest point. Durham does not have to be like any other place. Durham was cool before any of you were sworn in. And God willing, there will be a Durham worth preserving when we vote you out of your seats. Do not approve Howard's place, leave the damn watersheds alone.
Thank you for acknowledging that Durham is dope. All right. Kerry, Cory.
Good evening. My name is Cory Halavati.
And I'm Zora Lentz.
And we are here on behalf of the Environmental Affairs Board to provide our feedback on the Howard property rezoning. The EAB has followed and researched the rezoning, and we've used our decision-making framework tool to provide our recommendations. These were emailed to you by our Chair, Jennifer Carrigan, on March 20th, and again, this, this afternoon.
So, in our research, we found that increased stormwater runoff could potentially cause irreversible degradation of water quality. Waterways including Lit Creek, Falls Lake, and nearby wells would all be endangered by the increased runoff and the subsequent effects on nutrient and sediment pollution. Additionally, impervious surfaces coupled with tree coverage loss will contribute to amplified heat island effects. We are particularly concerned due to the development's proximity to the sensitive, environmentally sensitive Middle Creek bottomlands.
We recommend the council asks for more stringent commitments before approving, which will, which includes sustainable building practices, retaining tree coverage, and biodiversity protection should all be required before approval. Thank you.
Could you please, Zora, could you, Citi Clerk, I don't have you documented as speaking, could you, Madam Clerk, get our information? Thank you. Next I have... Mayor Pro Tim, you can just kind of make sure I'm not missing anyone here. Mimi Kessler? And did Elizabeth Miller speak? Is there an Elizabeth Miller in here? All right, you can come on up as well.
Good evening. My name is Mimi Kessler. I'm going to restate some of what's already been heard because I think it's important to restate it. We already have plenty of housing approved, and there are 46 other developments under development. So we do not yet know how bad that 98 traffic can be, and we will know long before this development is finished. It's impressive, the intersection improvements that have been proffered. The problem is that we need the highway to be lightened. It's also very wavy, it's very hilly, and I'm sure that there's going to end up having to have blasting because we have to have nature... We have to, we have to, man somehow needs to command nature instead of the other way around, which I don't understand. And we just did have that presentation about drinking water, and there are still people from early developments that were started a number of years ago, there are still people whose wells have fallen in and they don't have drinking water. So we are not, in fact, meeting the needs of everybody in the county. The buffers sounded really good, but I have a question. Are they going to be undisturbed buffers, or is it going to be clear-cut and new trees replaced? The notification area in the UDO does not satisfy the issue of county residences being so far apart. There were 12 neighbors of this property who did not get notices because they don't live within 600 feet. And it is true that nobody drinks from the lake, but we are increasing the filtering requirements for our neighbors so that they can have clean drinking water. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Cory and I have Samantha. And could you pronounce your last name? I, I am...
I have Elizabeth Miller.
Oh, you're Elizabeth Miller, Miller, okay. Is there Cory Laffery in the room?
She went before me. Cory was with the environmental group.
Oh, okay, got you, got you.
And Zora?
And you're Elizabeth Miller, and then I have Samantha Crop. All right, sounds good. Welcome.
Hi. So, you asked for me here back when you discussed picket apartments, and at the time you delayed that decision because of birds and a sidewalk and RRFB proffer. At the time, I raised concerns about that because I considered it an empty proffer that planning accepted. After you made your decision, DA was informed that sidewalks were required on both sides, and they withdrew their monetary commitment. So transparency of information impacted the outcomes relating to that proposal, but not before a decision was made. So I feel compelled to speak tonight, and I really wasn't planning to, I've scratched this out while other people were talking, because of transparency and consistency. So per 8.5.4.D1 and 8.9.2, stream and wetland buffers are required on development plans and site plans so that council has full transparency to make informed legislative decisions regarding the appropriateness and impact of development. I'm concerned that if the UDO is not being applied consistently, Durham is opening itself up to potential lawsuits. Tonight, it's about environmental resources and UDO requirements and the need to clearly indicate these on development plans, whether textual or graphic. Durham is the belle of the south right now. Jobs are coming here, people are coming here, our city does need to grow. I'm not denying that by any stretch of the imagination. Developers need consistency, though. If planning is not consistent in terms of transparent, Durham stands to lose investment. Durham also stands to lose money if inconsistencies lead to lawsuits. Citizens need consistency and transparency to effectively participate in this process. So it sows distrust in the process if citizens are reading the UDO and not seeing it consistently applied in the plans that make it to city council for a vote. I apologize, this is probably not the time and place to raise these issues, but I feel council needs to be aware. Great plans can be in front of you, but if they don't reach the intent of the UDO when they come before you, your decision may well prove to contradict your intent. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Samantha Crop and...
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Samantha Crop, and I work as the Noose Riverkeeper with Sound Rivers. We're a nonprofit dedicated to protecting water quality in the Noose Basin, and I'm here on behalf of our 5,000 members to request that you vote against the Howard property rezoning. And I also want to align myself with the comments made by your environmental affairs board and the various community members who've spoken out in opposition to this project this evening. For three years now, I have been speaking to you all and documenting a crisis of construction sediment pollution that is still unfolding in southeast Durham's Lit Creek watershed, where this proposal is located. I have testified before you on many occasions, and I have watched as this council has approved over 3,000 acres of land-clearing development in the relatively small, previously-forested Lit Creek watershed. I have testified about how this development has impacted our waterways. Three years of monthly sampling in Lit Creek across from the Howard's property rezoning have revealed that over 75% of turbidity samples we took failed to meet the state water quality standard. And I have also testified and included many of the photos you've seen tonight of that sediment flowing into Falls Lake, which is able to be seen from the sky. Right now, plumes of clay can be seen flowing from Falls Lake, flowing into Falls Lake from Lit Creek, and I documented that as recently as just a week ago. And I do want to note again, this is the drinking water. Of, of course, we don't drink directly out of the lake, but it is the drinking water of half a million people. The Howard property is directly adjacent to the protected Falls Lake Critical Watershed area, and it's only a mile and a half from Falls Lake itself. As it stands, the conditions offered in this proposal do not provide meaningful assurances that this development will not further harm Lit Creek, and so we're asking for some of those meaningful assurances to be made. And I'll name a few suggestions. Number one, the developers should commit to not impacting the natural heritage area. Committing to staying out of the floodplain is not equivalent to not impacting the natural heritage area. They should commit to larger riparian buffers. The Natural Heritage Registry recommends 150-foot buffers on streams that feed into these areas. And they should also recommend, promise that 80% of the trees within that 50% open space are actually protected and not just replaced, cleared and replanted. Finally, I do sit on the Raleigh Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, so I have to comment on the fact that we could do much better than planning for a 25-year storm. We should be looking at 50-year storms and 100-year storms in the context of climate change. So the last thing I'll say is that, you know, tonight, in honor of Drinking Water Week, I am asking you to set the bar higher than business as usual. So please, please heed the comments provided by your environmental affairs board and your community members who are here tonight and protect this special place. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two final speakers. Kelly Jones and Larry Howard. Kelly Jones? Does she go, okay. And then there's Larry Jones, all right.
Hello. Thank you all for this opportunity, Mayor Pro Tim and Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Kelly Jones. I, my father is Michael Jones, my stepfather is Larry Howard, and it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be here tonight, would be a part of this process. I, we're very blessed in Durham, very blessed to have the development and the growth and the leadership that you all have exhibited over the years. I had the fortune of traveling during the country, across the country, during the real estate collapse, and what we saw throughout the country was devastating. We saw some setbacks here, but we really, really expanded and we were safe. We were protected because of good leadership like you had mentioned earlier, Mayor Williams. I think about my children, I think about the diversity that I saw, and my kids are in third grade, and I thought about the diversity that I saw in third grade of the people that have come to Durham and the influence that we've had, whether it's Duke University, NC Central, UNC down the road. We've been very, very blessed in our area to have the community that we have around it. And Durham is growing, and this is an opportunity to be a part of that and to expand into an area that, I have family out there. I'm holding a picture here with my father, who passed away shortly after this picture, was in Wellens Village. We were mentioning Wellens Village a moment ago, within minutes of this particular site. So this is a, an opportunity for Durham to really expand and grow and welcome the people that are coming here. We are a hotspot, we've been a hotspot for a long, long time due to amazing leadership by, by the city council as well as our county commissioners. I, I can't help but think about the Huntington Disease when we have opportunities for our medical, medical facilities. My, my kid's mother is from Ohio. That was somebody that came here, and I was blessed for that. But unfortunately, when I thought about her grandfather, he had to travel in over an hour to go to the hospital. We take for granted the opportunities that we have, the medical facilities that we have in terms of city medicine. Those are things that why people move here. I think of one of my, my son's good friends in school, he's from Missouri. His family, his, his father's a lineman, couldn't find any work out there in Missouri, but he's here and he's working and he doesn't have to worry about that. Our unemployment rate is just shy of 3%, which is far below the national average. We are very blessed in this area to have the opportunities and have the, the forethought and the leadership exhibited by city council to help expand our community and help invite people to our, to Durham. So I ask you to vote in favor of this, to help move, move Durham forward as we continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Howard, and I have one last speaker, and that's Rob Height. My apologies, it was at the top of the list and I didn't see it, sorry.
Thank you. My name's Larry Howard. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and the staff. I'm the executor of state for my wife Lucy Howard, who passed away in February. My wife's family, they grew up in Durham, lived in Durham, worked in Durham. This is the time most of the previous generation has already passed on. The people put this land together, the people that used it for forestry, for whatever, they have also passed on. We think the new community that Dan explained will be a great legacy for our family and to the Jones family and the Height family. It will provide security for our children, our grandchildren, ourselves, as we get older. This plan seems to be exactly what the city council and county commissioners wanted when they approved the comprehensive plan a year and a half ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Height?
Good evening. My name is Robert Height Jr. My friends call me Rob. Good evening, members of the council. I was born and raised here in Durham, and I stand before you tonight, not just as an individual, but as one of the representatives of my family, people who have lived, worked, and cared for this land and this community for more than 60 years. The approximate 86 acres in question have been in my family since long before most of us here were even thinking about zoning maps or development plans. My parents, who have since passed on, cherish this land. They worked it, they paid taxes on it, they raised children and grandchildren around it. When they passed, the responsibility of that land came to me, my sisters, my aunt, and my uncle. We did what they did, we took care of it. We didn't buy this land five years ago to flip it for a profit. We've paid our dues for over six decades, keeping it, maintaining, honoring its history, and fulfilling our responsibilities as stewards of that property. We didn't make this decision lightly. We were approached by developers, and after long discussions among the family, we made the decisions that now it's time to pass it on. This isn't just about money, this is about legacy, this is about the next chapter. My children have moved away, and the cell gives me an opportunity to be closer to them in my later years. It gives our family, which has been rooted in Durham for generations, the ability to take the fruits of those roots and build something new in our lives. Throughout this process, we've even lost two more family members, people who won't see this transition come to pass, but who supported it and knew the time had come. I understand that there are voices who want to see this land preserved, I respect that. We all love the beauty of open space. But I ask that you also recognize the story behind this land, the people who poured their lives into it, who never took shortcuts, and who are simply making a thoughtful generational decision. This is not a transaction for us, it is a turning of the page, and we believe this is an opportunity not just for our family, but for Durham as well. Growth is coming, and we have chosen to be part of shaping that growth responsibly, not resisting it for sentiment alone. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, those are all of the speakers that I have. I've exhausted the list of online as well as in person, so therefore, at this time, I will declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. I will start to my left. Councilmember Cook, it's on you.
Thank you. I have a couple of staff questions. It's not like particularly relevant, but it came up, and I just want to revisit it. We had a conversation about compensation from blasting damage and whether or not that could be included as a proffer. Can you talk more about that and why it cannot be included?
Actually, there's been further conversations since then, and Sarah can address that.
Great.
Good evening. Sarah Young with the Planning Department. Councilmember, was the question...
Councilmember, was the question specifically about compensation from blasting damage or commitments regarding blasting?
Any commitments regarding blasting?
So I have verified with the Fire Marshal's Office that there is a mechanism in place where we can, if someone proffers a commitment to not blast a property, that that is a commitment we can accept. However, that is probably the limit of our enforceability. So anything beyond that is a private matter between the, um, should there be blasting and there are any concerns about who pays for what? That is a private matter between the blasting company and the property owner.
I want to talk about Policy 79 and the floodplain. Is that policy met or is it not met?
So we feel that it is, in terms of whether or not it exceeds the UDO, from a staff perspective, it does. The Policy 79 is a policy. It is guy, it is guiding our ordinances and it guides your decision-making. Policy 79 cannot, is not enforceable by law. It cannot prohibit anything. It says that we should not develop in the floodplain, natural heritage areas and so forth. The UDO does allow development in the floodplain. It's difficult, it's costly, but it can be done. So from a staff perspective, the applicant has exceeded the UDO standards by saying they will not develop in the floodplain. That is above and beyond UDO standards. They have not, as the, um, members of the public who spoke stated, they have not committed to not developing the natural heritage area, which is a larger area.
Yeah. And I may have some follow-up questions for the applicant about that, but while I have you up. The seven streams that were found by DEQ, are they there or are they not there?
So there has not been a stream determination done for that at this time. It is not required at the zoning stage. It would be required at the site plan stage.
Can you talk more about that?
Okay, sure. So after zoning, the next stage in development is a site plan. That is an administrative review of a more detailed, basically picture of what's going to be developed on the site, where the building is going to be, where the parking, uh, parking lot is going to be and all that. If there are streams on the site, they would need to be buffered as part of that site plan. And the applicant will do a stream determination at the site plan stage to determine exactly where those streams are and how they need to be buffered.
And is there any oversight by the city in that process?
There is. That gets reviewed. That's a little bit out of my immediate bailiwick, but, um, yes, that is, that is reviewed by, by the city to make sure that it's, meets all requirements.
Why do we have no streams listed? Like, why do we have a definitive statement in our report?
That, that's, that's an error on my part. I should have been more vague about that in the, in the staff report about how it's not, it's undetermined rather than not on site. That's my, that's my mistake.
But it's, you're saying that it does not matter if streams exist or don't exist because in-site plan, if they're identified?
It matters that they exist or don't exist.
Right, but not for us in this moment?
And they don't need to be, they're not required to be shown or defined because the UDO in itself requires any streams that are on site to be buffered. In a textual development plan, we don't require them to be shown or described. In a graphic development plan, we do.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for you, but I might call you back up. Okay. All the way back up to the things that I had planned to ask you, um, which were echoed by some folks who came up here. That southern part of the land, the, the natural heritage site, um, it also overlaps with the recreation and open space. It's also the nearest part of the land to the Lake Creek runoff. Why, why have we not seen any preservation there?
So the textual development plan is a different kind of application. All right. It's, it's all text commitments. It's, um, knowing that we need to meet the stream buffer requirements, the floodplain development requirements, so on and so forth. What I can tell you is, and actually, if I can pull up a slide, I'm just going to go ahead and do it. Mr. Kane, I'm going to share a slide that's a survey of the property, if that's okay. It's not a design, doesn't show anything proposed. It's just, here's what's out there. If it'll come up. Control L, do I remember that correctly? That's the extent of my memory for the evening. We have in fact done a survey and we have in fact done a stream determination, a couple of them. This last one was done by a well-respected firm called Spangler. What this slide shows is the entire western portion of the property is a stream. Because we will be developing it over 24% impervious surface, remember one of the commitments is we back down from 70, but, but we will be developing it over 24% impervious. The stream buffers will all be 100 feet, not 50 for an intermittent and 100 as if they were, were not in the watershed and not in the buffers. In addition, we have that floodplain area off-site that you see in the bottom, very bottom of the page there. So, and there are also steep slopes in this area. That's the advantage of giving, getting the survey and showing what that's done. So the, the UDO has very robust requirements for protecting floodplains, for protecting stream buffers, uh, for protecting streets, steep slopes. And all of that will be articulated at the site plan phase. But I can tell you that we have no intention of developing down, not only in that corner of the site, but going up the, uh, the entirety of that, that western corner of the site just because we can't. The buffer, the buffer, the ordinance requirements preclude us from doing that. So whereas the natural heritage inventory map that's on the state website shows the area of the site, that area going up in here a bit and back down and stopping here, we're actually going to be protecting all the way up to the top, which is the wildlife corridor that somebody mentioned that would be important as well. So we think there's hopefully a little quid pro quo. We think the area that we're protecting is as great as the natural heritage area. And keep in mind, you know, I've done these projects for 40 years. We've done dozens of sites that have had natural heritage inventories and it's, it's not an exact science. You cannot take the line on that natural heritage map and say, this is exactly where something might be. It's a generalized map based on soil surveys, based on topography, based on floodplain and based on streams where they've said, this is an area that could be conducive for, um, some of these threatened and endangered species to be. It's not that they're there. It's that the, based on the, the high 10,000-foot mapping we've done, it could be there. So what I can commit to is we will not be developing that side of the property. And we think that's probably about the same acreage as the natural heritage inventory with the advantage of also providing a continuous wildlife corridor of roughly 250 feet wide. Cause remember, uh, you go from the edge of the stream bank and Durham has an additional 10-foot buffer buffer, as we call it, that would be beyond that. So there would be no structures, there'd be no buildings, there'd be no parking, no paving or anything like that in that corridor. So, um, that's been our intent all along.
Just for the record, there is no quid pro quo operations going on with the council?
No, no, no. I mean with the, with the, with the natural, natural heritage.
Correct. I just wanted, I, I heard the, I heard the phrase, I just want to be very careful. It's not happening up here.
Or, or, or suggest that, so.
Did you say at the beginning of that, that there was a stream study done?
Yes.
And we just don't have it?
Yeah.
This is the first I'm hearing about it being done.
Okay. Interesting.
But, um, Mr. Kane, to be, be clear, I don't, I don't think it's a requirement of the textual development plan application to provide a stream survey.
That is correct.
And to be clear, that stream survey was done well after the development plan application was submitted in February of 2023, something like that. But we wanted to know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm not saying that anything happened untoward. It just, it, I do think that it does not inspire confidence when there's a lot of streams and our, and our staff report says there's no streams. I, I understand that that, that that is confusing and, and feels not transparent. So, um, that's, okay. And so you're saying that the wildlife corridor is just going to be the UDO requirements and the stream buffer? And so that would be, including the stream, that space is what you're saying? It'll be the wildlife corridor?
Correct. The wildlife, there, there's no, there is no UDO requirement for a wildlife corridor. But there is a UDO requirement for a stream buffer, 100 feet from the top of the bank, either side of the stream. And that in essence is going to end up being a 230, 250-foot wildlife corridor continuous from north to south along the east, western property line adjacent to the, where the charter school is being built.
Um, and this is something that I had on my list and also it seems like it was brought up by our, by our Environmental Affairs Board and several other folks. But any interest in expanding that, uh, storm to 100-year? Have y'all thought about that? I know we had an expansion today.
We looked at various levels of stormwater management. Um, we, we are confident that we can handle a 25-foot, 25-year storm without the pond sizes getting to the size that they would potentially start impacting the number of units or open space. So we think we're kind of in a sweet spot on that right now.
Okay. I mean, we have some, I mean, I know it's not a requirement, but there is some pretty major climate change going on and, uh, we're going to be having storms frequently. And so.
Understand.
Just a thought coming back.
Appreciate that.
Any clarity on the type of commercial?
None at all. Uh, we, uh, we would welcome anyone who's interested in having a commercial business out there. We would certainly like to see maybe a childcare facility is one of the uses. We can, we've, we've, we've allowed ourselves to build up to 12,000 square feet, which is a pretty substantial building or series of buildings. So we have not specifically thought about what the commercial would be, um, but we're definitely going to be approaching childcare centers and see if anybody would like to locate
There was a comment from, and I do appreciate you, um, taking those comments from the Planning Commission and, and making some more proffers based on those. There was a comment about clearcutting forested land. Um, and then there was also another comment about potentially preserving trees as opposed to replanting native species. You talk about, um, there is some old woods that we've got in there and, and some pretty important wildlife habitats. If we're going to maintain them, um, what we can do to maybe not chop the trees down and then replant them?
So first and foremost, if there are specimen trees and Durham does define, define specimen trees in the, the landscape buffers that we committed to, not just the required ones, uh, we are required to save those trees, um, per the ordinance. Uh, and that includes the limits of root disturbance around them, things of that nature. The, relative to the native species, this was the specific comment I had with, uh, Planning Commissioner, uh, Woke at the meeting a month and a half ago. And that is native species are great. I, we advocate for them as often as we can. I know they're, uh, they show up in the, uh, the Durham Landscape Manual as plant material. There is not enough native plant material, nursery stock in the entire state of North Carolina to meet the quantity and size requirements that the Durham ordinance dictates for plants. I wish it was different. In fact, I will tell you, I actually convinced a friend of mine who's gone into the nursery business to specialize in growing native plants. And that's what he's doing right now. In fact, he's contract growing, growing plants for the new, um, aviary down at the North Carolina Zoo, because they wanted to use all native plant materials. So he's doing that. But there's not enough nursery stock in, in the state of North Carolina to, to do that. We certainly can use some. Uh, I think we could even, you know, say that we'll use it as it is available, um, but there's not enough nursery stock in the state to commit to using only native plant materials.
And, and any commitment around not cutting down the trees outside of the ones that are restricted to be cut down, obviously?
Could you repeat that again?
Any, have y'all thought about not cutting down, not disturbing, not disrupting some of those spaces as opposed to replanting?
So we do have some, we will have tree preservation areas as well as tree replacement areas to meet our tree coverage requirements. Can't tell you just right now where they would be or where they would, would not be.
Okay.
But in the tree coverage area, the tree, the tree save areas, we will not be cutting trees in those areas.
Um, and then the last one that was, uh, stated by the Planning Commission, any, any green building certifications that y'all discussed after that?
We have not yet. There's not a, there's not a, uh, uh, final builder on board yet with this, um, builders, I should say, with this. So we don't have anybody that can, can really discuss that with. It's something we've done time to time on other projects where the builder has actually been the developer. But, um, I don't, I don't think that's something we can do in this one right now. It's a good question though.
Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you.
I'll leave it to you.
Member Baker?
Sure. Just one, one question for staff. Just wanted to, you've heard this question many times from me, just wanted to ask, um, if there were conversations with Parks and Rec about public park dedication on, on the site?
On this site, I don't believe there were, no. I'm not aware of any conversations with Parks and Rec about that. I know there, there were some, um, commitments tonight for, um, additional recreation facilities on the site. And we suggested to the applicant that those be made publicly accessible, but there was no discussion about any donation to Parks and Rec or dedication to Parks and Rec on that.
So that, those would just be, the, the commitment that you made this evening would, would just be private space?
Yes. It's part of the, the community open space within the, within the community. Right. Not, not, not publicly, in a public easement or a public park or anything like that. But certainly there will be the, the public greenway easement running through the property where the greenway master plan shows it, um, and build the, and build the greenway trail to city standards.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Gabriel?
Thank you. I actually have a question for the owner of the property, whoever that is.
Uh, he's coming back in now.
Oh, he went, he went off. And if not, Dan, you can maybe answer this because you maybe have spoken about it, but...
Mr. Height, welcome back in. I have a question for you.
Thank you. Have any land conservancies or neighbors around you talked to land conservancies about buying your property?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah. Have any land conservancies approached you or neighbors in conversations with land conservancies approached you about buying your property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. That's all the question I have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reese? Thanks, Mr. Freeman. I have a couple of questions. First, Mr. Jewell, just on the, you, you mentioned the commercial's not definite in terms of what's going to be there. I'm just kind of curious. I think you maybe referenced earlier that it's, it's not going to be fronting on 98 given the existing residences there. So can you say more about where the commercial would be located?
Sure. I'll actually-
Sure. I'll actually pull that map up again. I can show you because we have actually defined it as one of the text commitments, but I'll show you on the map where that is. Okay, the commercial area will be here. So this is an existing unopened road right-of-way that will be one of the two entrances that are shown on the transportation impact analysis. Because of the, uh, the grade, there's a fairly severe grade up against Highway 98 right here. Uh, and because of the commitment to having the building and, and parking back away, we anticipate that will be in, in this area. Actually, we've committed to it being in that area. And the, uh, the access to that, the driving access to the commercial area will actually come off of this new road that we build internal to the development. So there won't be a, another driveway out of 98. DOT would never approve that anyway. But does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then so, so sticking on 98, then also, I know there was some questions about the fact that the, the multi-use path along 98 is not continuous. So is that simply because you don't have the right-of-way? There's, there are parcels that are, that are in front of 98 that you don't own, right? So what's, yeah, what's the, why not the continuous path?
So, um, we, we, we know that there will need to be additional right-of-way dedication to build that 10-foot multi-use path. Uh, we'll certainly do that along our property frontage and build our part. Um, but we can't presume that any of the other property owners along 98 would be willing right now to give right-of-way to build, not only to build the multi-use path, but actually have grading easements down into their property and that sort of thing. So we'll do, we'll do our portion where we have that, um, on the, the portions that we have.
And then, so on that issue of, of, of access points. So I know that, um, so the Durham Charter School is being built there just to the west of you, right, on Kemp Road, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct. The Charter, Charter School is right here.
Right.
Yep. This is Kemp Road.
And so there was something in the, in the package that referenced that, that stub out to the west may be requi, may be required. So can you explain that?
So at the time of site plan, the ordinance has connectivity requirements. Um, and the, if we had done a illustrative development plan, the transportation department and the planning department would have looked and said, "We, we needed you to show a stub out to the west. We need you to sew one to the south, maybe one to the east." Um, and whether that can be built or not would be determined at the time of site plan approval. Since we have a textual, textual development plan, we're not showing that now. But those same standards will apply. Generally, um, environmental constraints sort of override the need those connections.
So this is the stream, right?
Yeah, the stream. It's quite possible to the south in this area that transportation and planning will say, "You need to at least provide a right-of-way for a potential road stub out there because that, uh, the project down here, Perry Farm, was, the zoning of that was approved a ways ago." Whether they connect to it or not is kind of up to them, but, uh, we'll show it down there.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, on the, so the issue of native plants, I understand that, that it's, it's hard to get the stock to meet the sort of like the, the demands of, of all the builders. But it seems like when we are approving developments, a lot of folks say they're going to use native plants. It seems like, and I guess I'm wondering also, I mean, this development won't, won't happen tomorrow, right? This is going to, what do you, when do you expect this may actually?
It's a, it's a, it's probably a eight-year build-out or something.
Right. So it seems like in that time, with the increased demand of native plants, we can expect more native plant nurseries to appear. So I was wondering, you mentioned sort of something about uses available. Could you sort of say more about that?
Yes. Um, actually, this is, this is similar to a, a project we did over in Hillsborough two years ago. They were interested in native plants, and we actually came up with a proffer that said, "We'll use native plant materials if they are available in the size required by the ordinance at the time of planting." So it was a little loosey-goosey, but it was in writing, recorded at the Orange County Courthouse, not the Durham County Courthouse, but it was a, uh, it was a commitment that if plants are available, we will, we will use them. Trees, native trees are much easier to find than native shrubs, if you can imagine. You don't see as many native shrubs. In fact, we had a small rezoning two weeks ago that you approved where we did make a commitment that the, uh, the street trees would be native, native plant materials. But that was a much smaller project. It would maybe have 20 trees or something like that.
So is that something you're willing to offer then? Yeah. So, so the staff have...
We might need to wordsmith that a little bit, Mr. Kane, but...
Can you tell me exactly what you're committing to here?
So the, uh, the proffer would be that, um, native plant materials will be used for required plantings, UDO required plantings, if available, in the size required by the ordinance at the time of planting.
I, I have, I have, I'll just be blunt. Um, from a staff perspective, I have heartburn about availability. How would staff determine that materials are available or not? Sarah, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I would just ask, so you put yourselves in the position of staff, and a developer comes and says, "Oh, sorry, can't get any." You know, what type of documentation would the council feel comfortable with that they were not, there was not sufficient stock available at that time?
If I could help a little bit, perhaps, um, we could do a, we would be required, our contractor required to do a, a search of, you know, eight or 10 native plant material nurseries in the state of North Carolina, provide that evidence to, evidence to the planning department about what's available, not available. It's still work for the planning department, but it might be a little more quantifiable to say that, you know, sort of, sort of the same, the city's, uh, DBE ordinance, they want you to do your due diligence and prove that you did it, uh, to meet those requirements. You know, not to put the two together, but there's, there's similar language to that. I'm overly complicating this thing, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to get there is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I'll say that if the council is comfortable with stipulating like a certain amount of, um, nurseries that would have to provide documentation through the applicant, that staff is comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable. I mean, I think that, I think the residents here have raised legitimate concerns about this, the, the sensitive nature of the land. I think the applicant is willing to provide some kind of assurance. I'm happy with that.
I think it set a firm precedent, actually. Yeah.
Just got a couple more questions. So the next one is about the, and I wonder if Mr. Judge could come up. I do have a question about the traffic, that folks have raised questions about traffic, especially the intersection of 98 and Kemp Road. Um, and we were having just a brief discussion at the intermission, so, at the break. So there's a traffic impact analysis that's pretty dense and hard to read. But essentially, in that analysis, you've got a table in there, maybe I'll pull it up here, that shows that right now the level of service at that intersection of Kemp and 98, I think, is like E and F, right?
Yes.
Currently.
So the, I believe the table you're referring to has basically the four different scenarios that they analyze. The, the first scenario is, was the existing conditions in actually 2022. When they first started doing the study, they submitted the application in early 2023, but they prepared the TIA in 2022. So that, that was the existing conditions at that time. The next one is the no build, which would be, I believe, 2034 is the estimated one year past the build-out for this. So it would be the estimated conditions in 2034 if...
With no, with no build, with, yeah, no development?
Development. The third scenario is the, the build scenario, which is still that 2034 scenario, but then it adds on the additional site traffic from this development. And then the fourth scenario is the build plus improvement. So it is the 2034 conditions plus the site traffic plus any improvements that the developer is...
And that, and so, right, and as I look at that, so that would reach a level of D. So what does the city recommend for intersections of this kind?
Signalized intersections in this area, our adopted level of service threshold would be a level of service D or better.
And that's, that's measured by?
It's measured by delay. There's a table also in that summary that shows what, so for a signalized intersection, it's the average delay of all approaches of the intersection. Since they are signalized for unsignalized, it is just the delay on the, um, the one approach with the most delay.
And that's delay in minutes, seconds?
Oh, 10 seconds.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, sorry, just a couple more questions, if you will, Mr. Mayor. Um... Oh, I, yeah. Mr. Manager, there were, there were some questions about EMS capacity, right? Can you, can you speak to sort of those concerns about EMS capacity, the need to require folks from Wake, sheriffs responding, city responding? Some of these folks live in the county. So can you just speak to that issue of the capacity of our emergency folks to respond to emergencies in that area?
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I, I think honestly I'd prefer to have the county, if we have questions of the service, because EMS is a county-provided service, that I convey any questions the council has to the county manager and give her the opportunity to ask her staff to address those. I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of the county in this setting.
So essentially, 911 calls that come, depending where you live, could be routed either to our, so there's a separate, separate 911 call center for both?
No. All, all Durham County 911 call centers are answered by our PSAP. We then dispatch those to a variety of responding agencies, either city agencies, volunteer fire departments, county EMS is also one of the, uh, people that we dispatch to. The availability of EMS units would be a matter of comment for the county to talk about in terms of what their availability is. Um, and so that, those would be questions I would prefer to have the county address.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question from Mr. Jewell. Sorry, up and down, up and down. Um, so I appreciate the, the proffer of 5% affordable, which obviously, as we've talked about so many times in the council here, housing is a real challenge in Durham, right? Affordable housing. Um, we've seen developments recently with 8, 9, 10% affordable. Um, and I'm wondering if you consider increasing that percentage, given the challenge of affordable housing in Durham?
I did have this conversation with our clients. Um, and with the other public interest things we're doing, like the Greenway Trail and things of that nature, um, they think they can go to 6%. And so that's, you know, five more units or something like that. But they think they'd be willing to, uh, increase that proffer to, to 6%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Freeman, do you have any comments tonight? Okay. All right. Mayor Proton, let's finish on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for always, your insightful questions and commentary. The, the last vote before this one was seven to zero. Uh, it was unanimous vote. Um, I think the Durham City Council may have maybe 16 more viewers than C-SPAN. Uh, so those who are interested and watch our meetings will know that the, the canard of a constant 4-3 vote has been increasingly become just less true. Um, you can tell the folk who are the true students of the council, who actually watch our votes, yeah, and not. Oftentimes, the 4-3 occurs based upon who's in the room, which listserv shows up, uh, because there have been similarly situated cases where they've been unanimous and the room's been half-empty. So, so I would encourage folk to do a little more deeper dive on this, 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 this talking point. It's really a talking point of 4-3. Um, I think the planning commission got this one right. Who do they work for? Uh, who, who's, who's in the planning commission's ear? Um, every argument that has been raised tonight, the planning commission used to say those same things. Uh, and they weighed it, and they still voted approval of this case. And there's a reason why, because some things have happened over the years in Durham that I think we need to be honest about. Um, not only do, do I know who I work for, I know how this job works. And I've had it for a few minutes, and I know what the boundaries of my power are and what they aren't. I know in this current climate, we're kind of used to governments and people in government doing whatever they want and making things up and kind of rewriting the rules that govern them. I know we're used to that, but this council, uh, is not caught up in that. We have a particular case with a particular set of facts before us. And I listen very carefully. I take public engagement very, very seriously. I used to organize public engagement to try and sway this council. Um, I, we have heard a lot of arguments tonight, not all of them, but a lot, not against this development, but against development. Not particularized to the facts of this particular case, but to development writ large. And that is not what's before us as a council this evening. Um, that, that is not with, it, those of us who know how this job works, that, we're not ruling on a moratorium in this area, which is effectively what many people want. And that's fine. I, I, I understand. That's a, that's a legitimate position to have. But that discussion has to occur earlier in the process. We, we can't burden one particular developer with the responsibility of a moratorium of what we think should happen in the entire area. The arguments that have been made tonight against this development are relevant to anything that would come before us subsequent to this, which is a different conversation. So we, as a council, we can't take a developer's money at the beginning of the process, say, "Okay, you come now and present your case before us and we'll adjudicate it," if we have already decided that we're going to have a moratorium in the area. It's called truth in advertising. Now, if you want to have that conversation, then, then that's a, there's a time and place for that. But at this point in the process, where a developer has a particular case, which I'm voting on tonight, not development writ large, this particular case, um, tonight, we've seen the number of units go down. We've seen the, the distance between neighboring properties increase because folk don't want to see it when they look out their window. Um, we've seen any number, to your credit, to, to the credit of the community, any number of concessions directly causally linked to advocacy on the part of the community, to your credit. And that, that's a good thing. Um, but at some point, we have to take yes for an answer. Um, it, it seems that there are some, no matter what the concession is, based upon your advocacy, the real goal is to not only stop this development, it is to stop development in that area. I get it. That is not within the purview of this council. Our, our state legislature right now is considering legislation that would limit our power as a local board. Um, so this is not the time to be sending up red flags and red lights, asking them for more attention and more scrutiny, uh, on Durham. I, um, and I, I want to say something very, very directly, um, and in the spirit of neighbor, as a neighbor, and a friend to many of you in the room, actually. Um, I, in my former life, I used to do political speech writing, and, and we'd oftentimes float phrases, see how they would work and respond, how the community would respond to them. Some of them worked, some of them did not work. I want to respectfully suggest that the phraseology, phraseology rural gentrification may not be the phrase you want to use. It may not be, and I put that to you respectfully. Um, it, 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 it smacks of an appropriation that I don't think you want to suggest. Um, those of us in our city who are actually going through gentrification do not have carve-outs for affordable housing. They don't have that choice. Those folk, the folk in our city who are actually going through gentrification are being priced out. It's not just about, they're concerned about the aesthetic of the neighborhood or, or who's shopping there or who lives next to them now. Their property taxes are actually going up, and they can't afford to live there. It's not a choice about what it looks like. Folks who are actually going through gentrification don't have an urban growth boundary. There's no such thing as a new arrival, wealthier, whatever, boundary to protect them. If you do want to use the term gentrification, then I would suggest that the response to rural gentrification has been our urban growth boundary. You pushed us to that. And here we are, still, even talking about things within the urban You pushed us to that. And here we are, still even talking about things within the urban growth boundary, having the same arguments re-rehearsed and exercised to it. Talk about transparency. It's almost like we want to pretend that that never happened, that the urban growth boundary didn't happen, the sedimentation mitigation didn't, none of that happened. It's the same arguments, and sometimes, we're not, colleagues, we're not applying the same standards within the urban growth boundary that we have, I think, made a good faith effort to police ourselves in terms of going outside of it, too, outside of the urban growth boundary. We voted unanimously just a few weeks ago to stop a big project because it was outside of the urban growth boundary. We know that there are going to be trade-offs, environment, tensions with environment, and housing people as people arrive. And respectfully, the suggestion that we don't have a housing crisis in Durham, and I understand the argument, the one data point that some office said, there's going to be X number of people here in 2050. The reality is, there are a number of ways we project growth in the city. It's not one discrete number from one office. So, but what's been done is, one number's been taken, and we've looked at the existing housing stock and said, oh, we've got enough apartments or homes for the people. But that's not, that's not really how the market works. If you don't eat chicken, it doesn't matter how many Bojangles are in the city. You're not going to eat chicken. Nobody buys the first house they look at. Nobody buys the first anything they look at. Just because they build it doesn't mean that that meets a discriminating consumer or purchasers wants. It may not be in the right neighborhood. It may not look the way they want. So simply because you have X number of houses and X number of people, think about your own buying habits. You don't, you know, you shop around. You may not like the apartment, just because, you're free to bring something to market, but the market might reject it. They might think it's inferior. It doesn't aesthetically meet their standards. So there is a housing crisis in Durham. And I think, as I said, I think that the planning commission got this one right. Finally, once again, we have an American family here who wants to deliver promises and blessings to their children. We had an American family here a few weeks ago who survived Klan violence, who was in the same type of predicament within the urban growth boundary. We had the same arguments presented to them. I'll say this finally, and Councilmember Caballero alluded to this. If you want to use the term gentrification, then you may want to use the same thing we have to tell our grandmothers and mothers who are going through gentrification. Don't sell your land, grandma. You know, when Americans exercise their ownership rights to transact and sell land, and there's nothing more American than that. So if you want to use the term rural gentrification, if you want to appropriate that term, then you should probably appropriate all the stuff that comes along with it by getting together, possibly buying mama and them's house, talking to your neighbors before it gets to this point. Because at this point, my job is not to initiate a moratorium, or to fix all of the universal problems with development. My job is to scrutinize the case and facts that are before me in this particular case. And I think the planning commission, whoever they work for, got this right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to allow all my colleagues to ask questions first before I spoke. Just wanted to thank Mr. Jewell for what I think is a very thoughtful approach that you've taken in speaking with council members and working on this case. There's always going to be this tension as cities and urban areas grow outward. There's always going to be this tension with the rural, as the urban beats up against the rural and folks that live on the edge. And that, what is important, is that that process of growth gets managed, gets managed well. I joined the Durham Planning Commission in about 2017, started seeing these cases out in this area, very large cases, of course, 40 acres, 50 acres, 60 acres, this one's 80 acres, all residential rezoning cases and annexation cases, and immediately became alarmed, and looked at the amount of land out there and thought, oh, my God, what if we just sprawl all throughout all of southeast Durham? And I also thought, wow, what an opportunity. What if we imagined what this, what if we created a plan and imagined what southeast Durham could look like? What if it was connected by mixed-use walkable nodes that were concentrated, so that there was high density that was potentially reached by transit, and it was concentrated and compact so that we protected all of the open space that was necessary to protect, so that we integrated the fabric of natural and urban together? And I know not everyone would be happy with that, but that would be a way that is sustainable. And as we look at the climate crisis, as we look at sustainability, this crisis is also a crisis globally, it's also a crisis locally, what we are doing and what we have done. And fast forward from that time that I joined the planning commission, started envisioning, seeing what was happening, envisioning what was possible in that area, fast forward to today, thousands upon thousands upon thousands, almost 10 square miles of residential sprawl, auto-oriented, auto-dependent development out in this area, deeply, deeply concerning. And I was, yes, I was fighting against it. I was fighting against it before Preserveral Durham was fighting against it, before Preservial Durham made it cool. But I think with a different perspective, that we can grow, that we should grow, but that we need to manage that growth, and we need to do it well. We need to do it sustainably. And we can, we can accomplish these things by growing in a compact, walkable way that is transit-oriented while also protecting the environment that is so important. And so I've been fighting against these cases, case after case, for many years, and that's not going to stop today. What I will say is that some of the elements that are being proposed in this evening are ones that I would have been envious of seven years ago, when I was first looking at these cases. They didn't have some of the things that were being proposed this evening in terms of the construction of the grainway. We went years without getting construction of grainway and just getting public right-of-way. Now we have tons of public right-of-way out there. Someone needs to construct the grainway. The mix of housing types, thousands of acres of a single use of housing, a single kind of housing type and typology out in these areas. This one is proposing, is proposing a mix, and a mix of uses, kind of, with the 12,000, maximum 12,000 square feet of commercial. But what we have done is created thousands upon thousands of acres of auto-centric sprawl in the middle of a climate crisis. We've created an environmental crisis out in southeast Durham, and that's not something that I can ignore. So my note, my vote will be no this evening. I'm too worried about infrastructure. I'm too worried about public facilities and services. I'm too worried about public parks and public park access. I'm too worried about car dependency and continuing to go down that route. I can't with conscience vote for this case, and so I will be voting no this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. So I think that my, and I understand it might upset residents, I'm pretty clear and transparent. I'm here to do what I envisioned to be the best that I can with the decisions that I make. And I understand that that may be uncomfortable for people. I understand I don't always get it right. And I also understand that people don't agree with me. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to move us forward in the best way that I can. I am probably one of the council members who tries to stick to the plan as much as possible, which is why, a few weeks ago, there was a case that was in the future growth boundary. I understood why it was in the future growth boundary. I voted no. Probably a year ago, there was a case further up 98, closer into town, that was supposed to have a commercial component. It did not have a commercial component. I voted no. When a case comes before us, and obviously, I really appreciate the applicant doing as much as they could with this, I wish there was more density. I understood why they took the density down by, was it 20 or 25%, and that was in response to community. But this case is in the urban growth boundary. It meets most of our comprehensive plan policies. I think the one that it's not meeting is around green building, and it, there's not a builder assigned to it, and so that makes sense to me. I also want to, and I asked the applicant this, this came up with the application a few, a few weeks ago, for folks who really want to preserve land, you have to buy it. That is how our economic underpinning on land works in the United States. We can argue about it. We can say it's unfair. We can gnash our teeth and talk about the commodification of real estate and how people get left out in that process. But that is the underpinning of this economic model. And we, as council members, are not here to decide if that's what we should be doing with land use cases or not. We have to look at the merits of the case, if it's aligned to our comprehensive plan as much as it can be, which again is just a guide. It is not regulatory. It's not, that's what the UDO is, and make the best decision possible. This case offers a lot of good. There's a lot of good in here. I appreciate Councilmember Baker's point, but the way you get there in this system is through incrementalism. You're not going to get a bus if you don't have density. You're not going to get more commercial if you don't have density. It's how it is. Again, it's not going to be perfect, but it gets us there. And to his point around cases and how they've improved, it's because those of us who've been sitting on this council have worked tirelessly with our development community to show up with better cases. And they have met that. And if you go across the state of North Carolina, you will see that the cases and the kind of development that we're getting in Durham is much better than many other communities across North Carolina. Again, is it perfect? It's not. But this isn't a process designed to be perfect. You're supposed to measure the merits of the case, and what is it delivering, and is it delivering what you need it to deliver? And my opinion with this case is it is. I understand why rural communities are frustrated, but when we adopted the urban growth boundary, we were very clear. If you're inside, expect higher density. That doesn't mean that we're not going to have environmental regulation in place. We have some of the most stringent buffers in the state. We have some of the most stringent stormwater controls in the state. That's a fact. That's not an opinion. And so I want to thank the applicant and the owner. This is a good project. It moves us in the right direction. And I also want to just make it clear that the charter school, which is a huge charter school that's adjacent to this property, did not have to come before us. It was not a rezoning. And so there's a lot of land use that doesn't have to come before us, that has just as big an impact. And in the case of a charter school, has a huge impact on who's getting educated and how they're getting educated, and the standards that are allowed in that building. And we had nothing to do with it, and neither did our school board. And I want to name that because it's outside many of the processes that I think most residents hope that their local government are getting to make, and we're not getting to make that decision. And so I'm just raising that as to the neighbor here, that had nothing to do with council, and it had nothing really to do with any local government body that you vote for. It operates outside. So I'm just naming that as a, as a thing for our community to pay attention and be aware of. Again, I will be voting yes. I understand that that frustrates residents, but I have to make decisions on the merits of the case and how I perceive it, and how I perceive it against the plans and decisions that I voted for previously. Thank you.
Colleagues, are there any other comments? I'll be the last. All right. Let's bring, yes.
I was going to say a few words. So, go ahead. Mr. Managers, real quick, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. I want to appreciate the folks who've come out from Preservial Durham and the neighbors in that area. We really appreciate the incredible amount of research you've done, the comments you bring to us, the thorough nature of your analysis of these cases, that informs dramatically the work we do here, as you've heard Mayor Protem said. And as the applicant has, has sort of acted on, there's a ton of concessions that have happened here, given your input. As Councilmember Caballero said, a lot of work goes on behind the scenes to sort of work with the staff, with applicants, and with the, with the values we have here in Durham, to make sure what we have, what comes to force is what we, the kind of development we want. I see in this, in fact, I see a lot of, a lot of folks who've worked incredibly hard to like, I mean, the work you've done for the applicant and the homeowners, or the property owner, thorough, thorough work on a range of things, including transportation, stormwater, natural areas, affordable housing, so many things. So I appreciate the work you put into this. I appreciate the staff who worked tirelessly on this, and I appreciate the residents who come out and hold us accountable. So I think, you know, in any negotiation, no one gets everything they want. But what I see here as a community that's coming together and really trying to thread the needle and make this work for all the stakeholders we have here. So, yeah, who I work for is the residents of Durham, and I feel like I work for all of you. And I feel like this is a case that, for me, has crossed a threshold and meets what we want to do, and sort of meets the, as much as we can of all the needs and interests of our stakeholders. So I will be supporting this project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll be, I'll be fairly brief here. I will be supporting the project, simply because it's a stronger project than not. If this isn't good enough, you know, to get us in the right direction, I don't know what is. I am not someone that makes the perfect enemy of good. I do look at the cases on an individual basis, based on their merit. I hear the condescending comments, and they're like water on a duck's back. Doesn't bother me. So feel free, when you come in, you can say whatever the heck you want to say to us. As politicians, you have that right. If you heard what I said about some politicians, you, we're probably in the same church. All right. But it, you know, it may bother some. It doesn't bother me. I have my comments in my head. I won't share with you. But, you know, Durham is dope. And that means that we're innovative. It means we're cool. It means we, as you said, give a damn, you know, and it simply means that we are trying our best to be the best city that we can be. And when I'm at the League of Municipalities, in case you don't know what that is, it is the representation of every city and town across the state of North Carolina in the same room. When I'm in that room, and everybody's, everybody's walking up to us saying, how in the world are you all doing it? And I tell them about this clash, and I talk about these cases like this, and I talk about how they make us better. So I know it frustrates some of you all when you come in, and, you know, I really, really, really do appreciate the work that's put into the presentations. What I would like more of is just a bit more communication before we get to the meetings, because there's a lot of information thrown out there that is just straight up wrong. It's just, it is misguided. And I think if we communicated more before we got here, it'd be a little less contentious, and we could actually, like, you know, clear it up. Like, for example, yes, the water in Lake Creek, yes, that is the water source for drinking to Raleigh, but there's an entire process that it goes to, goes through, you know, and, and we can better communicate that, you know, and that way, you know, you won't be just throwing cameras saying, people are drinking this mud, which is what it sounds like, and then I have to correct it, say, no one is drinking right out of the water, right out of the lake, you know? It's a better way to just communicate this stuff. So I want to appreciate the work that goes into it. I also want to be very, very honest, that we are a growing city. And, and I think someone said earlier, just one office, you know, that put a stat, just five to seven years ago, we were 289,000 people. We're now 320,000 people, just about, 317 and some change, to be exact. That is way faster than what we were projected, way faster. And all of the employers that are projected to come here that are not even here yet, there is a reason why RTP is building the hub. They are looking to grow about 40 to 50, maybe 60,000 people themselves. So the projections, the projections that keep being referenced are outdated. We are constantly growing. And when Durham is above the fray, and when we're like, when we are the shining star that people around the state want to look at and say, how are you all doing it? More people are going to want to come here. Our food scene, better than anybody across the state. This is just a cool place, a triangle, one of the best places to be in the entire country. And yet, we do have the smallest convention center in the entire state of North Carolina. And yes, we want to increase our sales tax revenue by at least 25% so that we don't have to keep taxing the crap out of everybody in property tax. Nothing moves in isolation. It has to move all together. So you can criticize different points of our growth, that's your ignorance. But I know what this job is like now. And I'm always going to make the best decision for the overall city and the overall community. And that's just doing this work in a very honest way. And that means taking your comments, taking your criticism, appreciating it, taking a diverse school of thought on this council, and appreciating it respectfully, and making the best decision that I can make. That is That is nothing personal. And that's where I feel like, you can get on Facebook and say whatever you want. I see it, but it is what it is. I, what I got out of this tonight is someone is leaving a legacy for people to be housed and there are others that are not. And that's where I am with it. So, uh, at this time, my comments are the last. We're going to move on to a vote. Um, yes, sir.
Can I just, uh, ask the applicant to, uh, make sure that we have the, I have five additional commitments being made tonight. One is to, um, commit to managing runoff to the 25-year storm event.
Correct.
Uh, committing to constructing at least two children's playgrounds and an open playfield.
Correct.
Um, committing to limiting impervious surface to a maximum of 50%.
Correct.
Um, planting native plants for required plantings when available, and we're going to work out the language about how to ma, uh, manage availability.
Correct.
Increasing the affordable housing amount to 6% from 5%.
Correct. Good memory. Thank you.
All right.
Aaron, before you walk, walk away, there wasn't anything on the, on the green materials or, um, there was one more. There was one more for the EAB.
There is no commitment at this time regarding, um, green building or green materials.
Okay.
All right.
Commitment, I'm sorry. And they can't make a commitment on the childcare facility.
They have, they have not. I'm, I'm not aware of one, no.
Colleagues, I'll be calling for the question at this time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing, annexing Howard property into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Highway 98 East Durham LLC.
Moved as read.
Second.
It's moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes four to three with council members Baker, Cook, and Freeman voting no.
Thank you. You can be quiet, please. Second motion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of residential rule, residential suburban 20 in Falls Jordan watershed protection overlay District B, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as planned development residential 5.783 in Falls Jordan watershed protection overlay District B, city jurisdiction.
Moved as read.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes again four to three with council members Baker, Cook, and Freeman voting, well, Freeman didn't vote, so that would be a positive.
It didn't catch it, but it's a no.
It's a no, okay. So it is four to three with Baker, Cook, and Freeman voting no.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D dash 605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, colleagues, for this rigorous work. Thank you, community members, for coming out. We are adjourned at 10:54.